I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening once again, welcome everyone in the audience and those feeling at home. We go to first item on the agenda, is a meeting with the secondary school building committee in conjunction with the school committee who's present here this evening. Secondary school building committee, Mr. Chuck Carrucci, the chairperson, is here to request the board to select when to set dates for a special town meeting and a special election relative to the school building project. Mr. Carrucci.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The building committee is here tonight, like you say, to set a couple of dates, one of them being a special town meeting and the other one to call for a special election to help move this project along. So what I'm asking for is a move for a special town meeting to be held on March 18th, 2013. You want to go for that or you want the special election?
Do you have a second request as well, Mr. Prisco?
Yes, I move that we call a special election to be held on Friday, March 22nd, 2013. And if there's any questions, committee's here, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Carrucci. Board members, questions?
What was the date again on the election?
Twenty-second.
Friday, March 22nd.
Twenty-second, Friday, March 22nd.
Just in relation to the Friday, that's because of the availability of the church and...
Correct. These dates, and Mr. Carrucci can add to it, these dates were vetted through Father Gillespie and Ms. Stats. This is the optimum date of that week. It's the Palm Sunday weekend, so given that, the Friday worked better for the church than the Saturday. Mr. Prisco.
When we read the motion for the special town meeting, do we have to put a time in there? Sorry.
No, no. That will be in the warrant and when the board approves the warrant, it'll be in that motion. Mr. Ms. Harry?
Steve, ask the question.
Okay.
I just wanted to...
We're good.
I'm sure everybody understood the Friday was being selected because of availability of church.
The church was available that day. We really didn't want to go into the following week.
Mr. Prisco.
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple things if I could. I've tried to attend as many of the secondary school building committee meetings as I could. And, you know, since this issue started to come around, and I do know every one of you on the board has been under a tremendous amount of pressure, and no one asked for this situation to arise, and I think we all have a fairly good understanding of why we're at where we are. And you know, I've come to your meetings, Mr. Carrucci, and I've voiced my opinion on a few things, and I'm not going to beat you guys over the head on any of that tonight, because I, all the things that I brought up have been pretty much voted down. But one of the things I would like to express to you, speaking to many of you around the public, and I'm sure you've heard from people around town as well, and I'm sure we're going to hear a lot of it tomorrow night, but the issue of accountability continues to come up. And I continue to hear that we have dorm witter, who continues to dig their heels in and not willing to be part of the solution. I find it absolutely...
Mr. Prisco, if I can just stop you right there, I think you're getting into subject matter that was part of executive session material, so I'd ask you to refrain from commenting on whatever potential negotiations may be ongoing at this time. I don't think it's appropriate to express in open session, whether it be here or in secondary school building committee meeting, anything that may have been discussed in executive session or what could be considered executive session material.
Oh, I don't disagree. I don't think I'm bringing up anything that's executive session material. The bottom line is accountability.
I respectfully disagree with the line that you're going down right now. I think that can be very detrimental going forward. You can express your opinion as to what you think should be done, but in terms of getting into what was discussed in executive session, I believe is matters which should not be discussed in open session.
Then let me try to rephrase it then.
Sure.
Okay. I think accountability in general, I would like to see get addressed tomorrow night, if that's possible. I'd like to see a solution as we, you know, because to support this, and I do support it, and I want to help get this through town meeting, get this through a special election. I think it's important, but I'm just providing the feedback that I've been hearing and I'm sure, Mr. Delaney, you've been hearing. And if we're, you know, we don't want to talk about what folks around town are saying. We want to bury our head in the sand on it because of executive session discussions. I think that's a big mistake.
No, no, well, you were going down a line when you started to talk specifically about dorm witter that I thought encroached upon executive session discussions. So what I will say to you, no one's burying their head in the sand. Obviously, everyone knows there was an error in estimates. We still have a need we need to satisfy. We still have a mission that we need to accomplish. There was a project that the community overwhelmingly supported about a year ago. Secondary school building committee has worked diligently to get us down or close to budget. We are not. That's why we're in the position that we are. It's unfortunate that the estimate was wrong. However, all that would change, and I know this is difficult to accept, and every member of the school building committee is upset as a result of the error in the estimate. The difference would be, and I would agree, that it would have been much easier to have asked for the 107.7 plus back a year ago than it is to go back and ask for more money now. It's a position that I never thought we'd be in, nor do I relish the position that we're in, but we are. So we've got to remember what the mission, the need that needs to be satisfied, but no one's burying their head in the sand. We can honestly say to the public that there are ongoing negotiations with those that may be accountable, and those are ongoing, but I think that's all that should be said concerning holding anyone responsible at this time. I think any further discussion regarding that, those particulars, are inappropriate for open session.
I apologize if I went down a road that you think is inappropriate, but I think the message I'm at least trying to relay is the fact that accountability has to be addressed before March 18th. I think it's important, or I think we're all going to have a hard time going forward. I guess I'll just leave it at that. But I will, I want to end it by saying that I also appreciate all the time and the energy that the secondary school building committee has put into this. And I know none of you asked for this situation. This is clearly nothing that we all thought we would be in after we walked away from that wonderful special election we had, where we had a four to one vote in favor of this project. So I appreciate your time, and I know you put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to get to this point, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything further, board members?
You don't.
Mr. Prisco.
I just want to say it is an unfortunate set of circumstances that brings us to this point today. And as pointed out, you know, the overwhelming majority of people who participated in the special election last spring, you know, supported this project, whether it was 108 or 118 or whatever it was going to be, I truly believe that the project was going to be approved. You know, unfortunately, as the chairman pointed out, there were some errors in the estimates, and I don't believe it's through any fault of the secondary school building committee. I think we were ill-advised. I think there's some culpability, but you know, that'll be determined down the road. But the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. Whether this is approved or not approved, again, to me, it's for the general public to decide once again. And, you know, that being said, we have to move forward and get a decision from the general populace again in relation to what we're going to do. Should they decide to support it, so be it. Should they decide not to, then there's other decisions that need to be made. But the longer we wait, the more it costs us and the more it costs this project and the more it costs this community. So, you know, again, I support somewhat where Mr. Prisco was going, but to me, there's another venue to handle that. And I, for one, am going to state publicly that I expect to hold the appropriate parties responsible for their individual roles in coming to whatever conclusion it was in relation to the estimates, and they were wrong. So, that being said, I'm going to vote in favor of calling for a special town meeting and calling for a special election, and let the people decide what they want to do. Between now and then, there's going to be a lot of information provided to the public. I ask people to set aside their emotions because it's very easy to sit here and try and place blame, but the bottom line is, you know, we're committed to the project, the project is moving forward, and we need to just make a decision and move on. So that's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Foody.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, again, with the two previous speakers, I agree. I mean, I'm in favor of going forward with a special election because I believe it's not the five of us who should make that decision, but the decision of the voters of the town of North Reading, which is what happened last year. I think it's very important, though, that anybody interested and anybody who plans on going out to vote, that they do go to one of the three informational sessions. I think this year is more important than last. I think everybody knew kind of where it was going last year, but I think it's important that people who are going to go out and vote know how we got to the situation we're in right now, again, by no responsibility of the SSBC, who I think, for the meetings that I go to do a phenomenal job, and I appreciate the time that they give. But I think these three informational sessions that are coming up within the next month, month and a half, are more important than the ones that were last year. So I strongly suggest that you attend one of those because it'll give you insight as to how we got to where we are today and why we have to take this route. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ms. Harry.
I am in support of putting this, these dates on for a special election and a special town meeting, and I'm doing so because I believe that the public who's supportive of the project needs to have another opportunity to let us, let the town know and the building committee know how they want to proceed. I could ditto Steve's words basically on the other issue.
Thank you. So, just a couple of final comments for myself. What Mr. Foody had spoken to, there is a informational session tomorrow evening, 7:00 PM, the high school auditorium. I encourage everyone who is a taxpayer in town to come out and attend these sessions. I've read and I've heard quite a bit of misinformation that's out in the public regarding what has occurred here. If you attend tomorrow evening, you'll find out the facts and the truth about how we ended up in this position, the process we followed, which is the MSBA process. We have not deviated from that process from day one. If we had, MSBA would have spoken. MSBA is very well aware of the position that we find ourselves in. MSBA has not pulled our grant, as has happened in other communities. And although it's unfortunate, we find ourselves in a similar position as several other communities. If you just take a look at other secondary school building committee websites, you'll see the problems that other communities are having. In particular, take a look at Duxburg, similar type project, much larger original budget than we have. Not that it takes away the pain here in North Reading, however, it tells you that we follow the process, we're not alone. Come out, you'll understand, have a better understanding what the process is that we're going through, how we ended up here, and where ultimately we'll end up in terms of one of the bigger and best decisions the secondary school building committee made was to go with what's called a CM at risk and chose the company called Gilvain. With that, that means that on or before March 11th, we will have what's called a guaranteed maximum price in this project. So by the time we go out for special town meeting and special election, everyone in this community will know with certainty as to the actual cost of this project. What we've been dealing with to date are estimates. It started with estimates on a concept and has developed through schematic design. Now we're in the construction document phase where, at this point, the estimate is based upon a 60% construction documents. So by March 11th, we will have a definitive number. We won't have that tomorrow evening. On our next informational session, February 20th, 28th, excuse me, February 28th, we will have a range. We expect to have a range that we'll be able to tell the community about. We will not come out with a specific dollar number tomorrow night, nor will we come out with one on February 28th. We're going to wait until we have that guaranteed maximum price, and that will be on or about March 11th, when secondary school building committee comes back here into this room and a joint meeting with the school committee, we will know that number. That was one of the best decisions the secondary school building committee made, going with the CM at risk. It also guided us additional reimbursement from the MSBA. So with that, Mr. Carrucci, you want to say some final words?
The only thing I want to remind everybody is that rather than saying, hey, this is a we project for everybody in this town, okay? And everybody that's working at it, it's a we. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody who's doing this wrong or who's doing that wrong, okay? That's the final thing I want to leave. It's a we project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrucci. With that...
What time is the meeting tomorrow?
7:00 PM, high school auditorium. Mr. Webster.
No, Webster, a school committee chair. Just quickly, I'm not a big Rush Limbaugh fan, but I want to do a mega ditto's for all of the comments here. I think accountability and credibility are two key things that we need to reestablish, and I hope people come to the information sessions because that's our goal of those sessions, to, as you said, Mr. Chair, tell everybody how we got to this position and give facts. There have been, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of good discussion, but there are a lot of rumors out there and a lot of untruths. So if you want to hear exactly where we stand, come to one of those meetings. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Mr. Webster, would you like to, I don't know if the school committee has taken a vote, I presume they have, concerning special town meeting and special election?
I think we're going to take one tonight.
One more question. You mentioned the MSBA pulling the grant or haven't pulled our grant. Is there any risk that that could actually happen?
No, we haven't deviated from the process, all right? There was one community, Conquer Kyleisle, their grant was pulled because once they got into the process, they made changes outside of what their funding agreement had called for. We have not done so. We have not deviated from the MSBA process. And as I stated earlier, MSBA is fully aware of the situation that we find ourselves in. They're looking for the district to find a solution to that problem, and that's what we're working towards.
And just one last question. Will MSBA be at any one of the three informational hearings?
They're very well aware of the situation, I presume, because I've been told by Representative Jones that they will read the transcript, as they do on every other project, every other community. They read the local papers, they know what's going on. I presume they're aware of the informational sessions. They're open meetings, they're welcome to attend. I don't know whether or not they will, but...
On the MSBA, they haven't told us they'll be coming. I've asked that question. They are aware of the meetings. The one other thing that Sean mentioned, the Conquer Carlisle, they went above and beyond the scope of their project and decided that they were going to add additional gym space without telling the MSBA. And when that happened, the MSBA immediately shut the project down. I guess that's, so since we have not cut any square footage or educational programming from this project, so the MSBA is allowing us to continue at this time.
Thank you for your point.
Does anyone have anything else? Okay, we'll move to the motion. Mr. Foody.
Mr. Chairman, I move to call a special town meeting to be held Monday, March 18th, 2013.
Second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to call a special election to be held on Friday, March 22nd, 2013.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Secondary school building committee?
Thanks a lot.
See you all tomorrow evening.
See you Monday.
Moving on to item two. Finance director review the FY 2013 tax rate setting. And Ms. Paveo, I appreciate the fact that you were able to attend this evening. I know that you've been under the weather, so greatly appreciate that you're here this evening.
Should we bring the barrel closer?
No, no.
But you don't have anything on that needed the speakers, did you? You didn't need the speakers, did you? Because we unplugged them, we needed the power. Okay, good.
Okay, so tonight we're going to talk about the basis of setting a tax rate and what goes into it. We'll go over some basic terms and definitions first, and then we will go into some examples and illustrations of how the tax rate is set. So the first is, what is a levy? A levy is revenue that a community can raise through real and personal property. And it's known as the property tax levy, but everybody refers to it as the levy. The next is, how is the levy limit calculated? A levy limit is calculated annually by the Department of Revenue, and the levy limit each year is based upon the previous year's levy limit, not the actual previous year's levy. There's a difference, and we'll touch base on that in a few slides. How is the levy limit increased? The levy limit increases each year by three factors, and they are permanent increases in the levy limit. So most of you are familiar with Prop 2 and 1/2. So each year, a community's levy limit increases by 2 and 1/2% over the previous year's levy limit. Another factor is new growth. A community is able to increase the levy limit each year to reflect new growth in their tax base. So this would be any new increases in assessed values of homes due to modifications, improvements, et cetera. And lastly, the third way to increase the levy limit is through overrides. And these, we'll discuss in the next slide on what they consist of, but it's a permanent increase to the levy limit by voting an override. What is a debt exclusion? Debt exclusions are commonly referred to as overrides. They enable a community to temporarily or permanently increase the levy limit. And the main reason for doing a debt exclusion is so that a community can assess the taxes in excess of the levy limit for payment of debt service costs. Usually, however, those are just temporary increases to the levy limit due to the fact that debt service isn't going to continue forever, but it will have some life to it. An override enables a community, like I said, to permanently increase its levy limit, while an exclusion usually only allows for a temporary increase in taxes over the community's levy limit. So this is rather small, and I apologize for, but, and it's found on DOR's website, it's, you know, accessible to the public, but this was just to show everybody what our overrides consist of and what we still have to raise year after year on the tax recap, which is submitted to the Department of Revenue to set our tax rate. And the list continues, and the grand total is 5.4 million of overrides. So you can see that some of the dates even range back to '96, '99, and eventually, you know, they are going to fall off. The oldest one is '96, and it was for the little school renovation. The last one is for the most recent high school and middle school.
The $5 million figure you gave is our current debt.
Of exempt.
Exempt debt.
Exempt debt that's left.
Overrides, yes, yes.
Unpaid exemption.
Excuse me for a question, thank you.
No, it's what, it's, that was our current FY 13 overrides.
Yeah, okay.
So the debt is, will be reduced over time, so that will go down.
That's our cost.
These are the payments, these are the, I'm sorry.
That's our cost this year.
Yes.
Our annual cost.
These are the annual costs.
That's our annual cost.
Yes. But it changes every year due to the debt service payments.
Do we have...
I'm sorry.
I just want to interject that the key number is the bottom right one then, which is the number to the high school project for this year.
So do you have, do you have a slide with the total debt? In other words...
Total exempt debt or...
Total exempt debt that we have on the books.
Well, this is our total exempt debt that we have on the books. These are the FY 13 payments.
No, I'm not looking for the payments. I'm looking for the total amount that the town, the total exposure the town has until all the debt is paid off.
I can get you those, the original borrowing amount?
No. Going forward, from today.
Oh, sure. We have that, but this is just for this year's tax rate.
Okay, I understood that.
So...
The only thing I'm going to ask board members is, we're all talking over each other. Can you just raise your hand, I'll call on you, so we can just streamline this a little bit, that's all.
Sorry.
No, it's all right.
I don't know where to find it. If I open this, it will allow us to see it larger or not. So you can see some of the figures, a little clearer, but it's not allowed, it's frozen.
Yeah, it's thinking.
Mr. Prisco, you have a question?
I do. So was that number eight there for the schools?
Yes.
That 3 million, the whole number?
Mm-hmm.
So that's the cost of the 55 million?
Yes, for this year, exactly.
Okay. That's 55 million, right?
It's based upon the 50 million that we borrowed plus the 5 million premium. Hopefully, we will get information from the Department of Revenue allowing us to use that premium to offset future borrowings or, you know, to help us rather than amortizing it over the life of the bond. So every year, we have to do a calculation to get to the levy limit with DOR. So we start with the previous year's levy limit, and like I said, we add new growth, and then you add any overrides or debt exclusions. There's also another factor, which is new growth, but it's amended new growth from the previous fiscal year. So you can see that in our FY 12 levy limit was 33,813,104. We had amended growth of $316. And then we add 2 and 1/2%, which was another factor that, you know, increases your levy limit every year. And then you add your FY 13 new growth, which was 350,000, and you come to a total of 35 million. And then you go down to part three, letter B, and you add any FY 13 debt exclusions, which are for our debt service payments of FY 13. So the debt exclusions equal anything that we need to pay out for the debt service that we borrow. And that's 5.4 million. And you come down to a maximum allowable levy of 40,474. And you'll see in the next slide that that is our maximum levy that we are allowed to tax to, but you'll see that we didn't go fully to the levy. This slide is rather difficult to read for the viewers. You guys have it in your packet, and I have hard copies too, if it's that, you know...
If you do, if you could pass those out?
I might be able to open.
I think it's a little difficult to read even in our packets.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have a question, but I just wanted to raise a point that's kind of interesting as I looked at the last sheet, that the amount attributable to debt for the high school project is roughly almost exactly 10% of the levy limit from last year. is roughly almost exactly 10 percent of the levy limit from last year. The levy limit from last year was 33 million. The debt service for this fiscal year for the high school project is 3.3 million. So, you know, this will get into the total increase in the tax bill. You can see 10 percent of, the increase is almost entirely attributable to the costs associated with the new schools. The 10 percent increase in the levy, or the tax levy for 2013. I just saw that, and I thought it was kind of interesting. The numbers are almost the same.
Thank you.
So this is actually a little clearer to read. And basically, what we did was, we did an analysis of the change from FY12 to FY13 in the tax bill. Now, this page and this information comes from the first page of the tax recap that you guys get every year. And so it's strictly just from that. We just took FY12's tax recap and FY13 and put the information down so we could have them both side by side to see, you know, exactly what went on. So, we take all of our classes of properties and the values by class. You can see that the residential valuation by class for FY13 increased substantially. And all the other classes increased as well, but not as high. The residential, you know, increased by .660. So that is more than 50 percent increase. And also, you can see to the right-hand side, the total levy for the residential class increased 12.2 percent. That's a large jump in your levy.
Yeah, so the commercial, and the commercial property only went up .26 percent.
Right.
Versus one up .6.
So an example of how an increase in a residential tax bill would, what the end result would be. We take, this is just an example based on FY12 and the average single-family value. Now, we were trying to illustrate by taking the whole residential class and getting an average, but we wouldn't have the price for our average single-family. In the residential category, there's condos as well. So it was, that was a mix. So we just stuck with what our average single-family value was for last year, and then we have an illustration of what it is for FY13. So, the change, and all the numbers that were estimated for the increase for the school building project were based on FY12 figures. So, we took the 450,100, and we increased it due to the change in the levy of 12.2 percent. Now, at that point last year, we didn't know what exactly the change in the levy was going to be. So the average residential, single-family household's bill would have increased $790 based on what our information that we have so far in FY13. Then we just have the same illustration down on the bottom, and what the change was in the values of the single-family in '12 and the value of the single-family in '13. It increased by $2,300. The tax rate increased by $1.66. And the tax bills increased, on average, for the residential, single-family home, $784.
Mr. Prisco.
You don't have an example of the commercial, right?
No, not of commercials. I just stuck with residential, single-family homes.
So I could just summarize then, and if I'm wrong, tell me. So the larger burden of the increase is borne by the residential?
Residential, mm-hmm.
And?
Due to the valuations by class. They are our largest inventory, you would say.
Fine. The, what?
Go ahead, Mr. Perry.
The residential percent change, she's got between 2012 versus 2013 is .6 percent.
Yeah.
Or 60, is that 60 percent or points, I guess that's .6.
.6.
Yeah, and the industrial is .9.
Yeah, but industrials, yeah.
No, I understand that, but in terms of ratios, the industrial increased over that of the residential. Commercial was less, and the personal property was up considerably.
The reason why our social property is being up significantly is due to individuals saving in their income in excess.
The other thing that you're looking at is that the, you know, residential property represents 89 percent roughly of our total.
87 change.
87 percent, yeah.
So in the grand scheme of things, really, even though industrial went up .9 percent, residential went up .6. And if you were to take it by the percent of each class, that's a large percent, you know, to increase.
Mr. Prisco.
Maybe you're going to talk about this in another slide, but that's $784 in this example. Under the way the current tax bills went out, that whole amount was divided between third quarter and now the upcoming fourth quarter, correct?
I have an example to illustrate how exactly.
Yeah, I think that's the important, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think that's the important point, is that, you know, most of the questions that I've received over the last, you know, two or three weeks is, you're saying, you know, my tax bill didn't go up, the average person didn't go up, you know, $750 or $800 as we thought, it went up $1,200. And, you know, so the 22nd soundbite is, you know, if I annualize it over four quarters, you know, my tax bill went up $1,200, not $750. So the 45-minute explanation is, no, it really didn't, because that's only for the two quarters, we're making it up over two quarters. And I think that's what, I think tonight we should focus on, is making people understand what the tax bill really is, what they received, yes, but there's a makeup period right now for these upcoming two quarters. And actually, it should throttle back a little bit.
Every year, this example is going to illustrate exactly what you were just speaking of. Every year, when our tax bills go out, we're always playing catch-up for the first two preliminary billings that go out before our tax rate is set. So they're based upon the previous fiscal year's tax rate. So this example, it does, it has two different scenarios for both fiscal years. It has FY12 and FY13, and it takes two properties that are residential, single-family, and it takes one that is, this was just added, it wasn't.
We don't have it.
We don't have it.
Do you have a hot, do you have a hot copy?
I don't have it, I can email it to you guys.
Okay.
I just did it today as an illustration. So I include two different property values. I have one that is valued at $359,000, and then I have one that is closest to the average single-family home, and it's 461,500. We didn't want to, we were going to put an example on that was a real bill, but we didn't want to, you know, illustrate that, so we just did it out like this. So on, for the FY12 real estate bill, that was the assessed property value of $359,000, you have your first billing, and you have your second preliminary billing, then you have your third, and you have your fourth. So what the tax rate is based on is it's per a thousand. So it would be the tax rate multiplied times $359. I do a tax calculation, I say $359,000 times 14.38. Now, this is for FY12. The total tax would be 5162, $5,162.42. Now, in a perfect world, the total tax divided by four quarters would be $1,290.61. But because we are billing the first two quarters without knowing what our new tax rate is going to be, the first two quarters are based on that previous year's tax rate. So the difference between what was billed in the first and the second quarter, between what should have been billed, was $34.11 each quarter, a total of $68.22. So if I take the $68.22 and I add it to what was billed in the first and second quarter, which was 1256.50, I come up to 1324.71, which is then billed the third and the fourth quarter to make up for the difference between what should have been billed and what was billed, to come up with the total tax of $5,162.42. And then I move down to the same property. The assessed value did not change on the property between the fiscal years. And I see that the first and the second quarter preliminary tax bills are what should have been billed, like I said, above the $1,290.61 if we were dividing it by four equal payments. So that is what we billed for the first two quarters of FY13, even though our tax rate increased in November to $16.04. So then, we say, okay, well, $359, which is the $359,000 divided by 1,000, times the new tax rate of $16.04 equals $5,758.
Is it right there?
Yes, yep.
5,758.36.
36, sorry.
You want to use the pointer, because the people at home know what you're using.
They probably can't see that.
They can't see, well, at least they can kind of understand a little bit.
Okay, so this is what the total tax should be for FY13. It's 57.58, which is an increased difference of $500 at $95.94. So their bill, because their assessed value is not the average single-family home, their bill only went up $595 for the year. But they are being billed an extra $297 this year because we are catching up on the first two quarters of their tax bill. And how we get to that 297 is what their total tax was divided by four quarters, which is 1,439, so $1,439 is what should have been charged to them each quarter. However, the first two were based upon the 1,438 of last year. So when we come to the third quarter and the fourth quarter, we need to increase those quarters by $148. And that brings us to the 297. So in a sense, it looks like they're being, their total tax increased $900 for the year, but it really didn't, it just, if they were to take their, what their total tax would be, it's only $595 increase.
So I have a question for you. So that household that got that bill in February would have had half of that $595 included, plus one, is it 148.58?
They would see, they would see the total tax, though, too.
They see the total tax, but what the bill itself for this quarter would be, one half of that?
Their total tax for that quarter is the 1588, $1,588.57. We divide it in the two remaining quarters.
But the increase would have been one half of that $595 plus the 148.98, right?
No, their total tax increase is $595. But for the, if you look at it for the year, the total tax, because what it looks like when you're getting billed, if, like I said, in a perfect world, if we were dividing it by four quarters, it would, it would be $595 would be their increase. But we're playing catch-up because the first two quarters are based upon last year's tax rate. So their bill is only going to be 1588. But overall, their tax increase was 595. I don't know if I'm answering your question.
So they're essentially only paying it on the last two, the last two quarters of?
We're catching up for the first two quarters.
Right, so they're paying, they're paying the difference in the increase in the last two quarters.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so the increase, the increase for the year, putting aside the difference. There's two sets of numbers here, right? So it's the difference, the catch-up for last year, right? That's the total, 297.96, whatever that, if I did?
It's five, five number divided by two.
Yeah, the 595.94 divided by two.
That's the total increase.
Yeah. And you're making that increase up?
Right, we're making it up in the last two.
So that 595 includes the 297.
Yes, but if the person doesn't take their total tax and divide it by four, they won't be able to figure out what their total.
No, I know, I, there are two separate numbers.
We've had a lot of people come into our office and say, my bill, like Steve said, has gone up $1,200, and we have to say, no, it hasn't. The first two quarters, we have to catch up on, and then your total tax increased by X amount, whatever their assessed value is.
When people take the most recent tax bill and annualize it, it appears as though they have a 23 percent, 23.1 percent tax increase.
They multiply it by four.
Right, they multiply it times four, say, this is what I, if they take out their last four tax bills, previous one, they're right, you know, it's like, if they annualize the next two that are coming up, it looks like a 23 percent tax increase. But that's a false positive, a false negative, depending on how you look at it. Because, and this is the people, calls that I've been getting in the comments, saying, you know, my tax bill went up 23 percent, you know, 23.1 percent.
We're hitting those calls as well.
And it's, you know, not, no, it hasn't necessarily. And the questions come, you know, what did it really go up on a percentage basis? I know, now, we explained that we're catching up in two quarters, but what did it really go up from last year to this year? And how much of that was the school? Because when we were told, and we went out to the public and we said, you know, we're asking you for some new schools here. Your tax bill, you're going to expect an increase of about 11 percent for the school. And then you take 2 and 1/2 percent for your regular, plus new growth, so maybe a 2.75 percent. Plus 11, I should be at 13.75 percent. I'm at 23, you know, okay. So I think that's what we need to make clear to the public, is, yes, if you take your tax bill that you just got, and you annualize it, it looks like a 23 percent increase, but it's not. 10 percent of that, basically, is a catch-up for the previous two quarters, and going forward, it doesn't go forward. It's still just that 13 percent or so, 13 point, whatever. So, and I don't know what the percentage is, but it's going to be between 13 and 14 percent.
Well, like I said, going back to the levy, the total levy, which included the school project. Now, we didn't pinpoint what percentage of the school project increased the tax rate because it goes into our total appropriation, and then we have, which is our total amount to be raised on the taxes, and then we have our levy of property tax, and then we have all of our other revenue sources to make up that difference. So, you know, the other factors in the appropriations is the budget. If there was any deficits, if there was any other items that need to be raised, they get raised. So I don't have an answer to the school project, how much it increased it, but I can get that.
But the bottom line is, if people took the time to figure out the annualized rate and erroneously assumed it was annualized over four quarters, it's really half of that. It's really, it's really 12 and 1/2 percent, 12 and 1/2 to 13 percent, 12 percent.
They also need to look at if their assessed value changed, because that would be a factor outside of.
But all things being equal.
Right, it was, these two examples, you know, that their assessed values didn't change from year to year.
Mr. Perry.
There's also any exempt debt that's been paid off, brings that number down a little bit for previous projects. I know the answer to this question, going to ask it maybe for the purpose of the public. Why didn't we make an estimated bill in the first two quarters?
We can't make an estimated bill for the first two quarters. It would be nice if we could, but we don't have an estimate until we get our value certified by the Department of Revenue. Our new growth is certified by the Department of Revenue.
No, we actually do make an estimated bill based on last year, but why don't we make?
I thought you were meaning, why don't we make an estimated bill closer to what our real fiscal?
I didn't mean that.
Right, well, we are.
Is it statute?
Yes, because the new growths need to be certified by the Department of Revenue, and that doesn't happen probably until the end of September. So it's the values of the homes, the new growth, and then we can begin the tax rate certification process.
But to Bob's question, quite, we knew that the school had passed, so we knew what the impact was going to be. Why, as it comes July 1st, we couldn't have estimated above what we, rather than last year's tax rate? Why couldn't we have estimated at a new tax rate, eliminating new growth until that's certified?
Not just new growth, though, they have to certify our values altogether. So we can't do an estimate until they've completed that, so.
Well, then it's an actual.
When, actually, they've completed it.
Right, so.
Right, we can't do an estimate until our values are certified.
We can't do an estimate.
Right.
My understanding was that by statute, you had to use previous year's real numbers.
We have to wait until the Department of Revenue certifies our values.
Mr. Prisco.
Okay, then what did we call in those first two terms, the first two quarters? I thought we were calling those estimates.
They're preliminary, they're based upon last year's fiscal rate.
Okay. Rather than what we know to be factual, factually true, in relation to the expenditures we were going to incur, what we're being told is, we can't do that. So, what happens is, you have to take the last two quarters and make it up. When you have a big expenditure, like we do with the school, it's going to hit.
Yep.
Right.
I understand.
It's all right for you to say, "We can't do it." Just, just tell us.
We can't, we're not allowed to do it.
All right, there you go.
So, that's, that's why we don't. And, you know, it would be great if we could, because you would have a better understanding of what the year would look like for your property taxes. So, the thing...
So, the people that have been coming in and visiting with you, when they walk away from the counter, are they satisfied? Do they believe you? Is there something we need to do more?
No, they understand.
They understand, okay.
You know, we welcome, whether you want to call or whether you want to come in, we'll, we'll sit down and we'll go over your tax bill and explain, explain the increase, that, you know, we've been doing that for whomever calls or comes in.
There's, uh...
Mr. Frisco?
On a tax bill, I believe the tax for the year is published upon the third-quarter bill.
Yeah.
And if they looked at last year's third-quarter bill, they would know exactly what the tax increase is, that's another point that could be made.
Exactly, if you compare, if you compare both, you know, FY12's third-quarter bill and FY13.
What, I'm sorry, what did I come out to?
If you look at your third-quarter bill you just got, it shows the tax, total tax for the year. If you look at last year's, it shows the total tax for the year. If you subtract one from the other, divide by four, that's your true quarterly increase.
Yeah, and then you can do your percentage from there, if you wanted to figure it out.
So, same type of example, just with a higher assessed value, closer to the average, it's 461.5, this is for FY12. The first two quarters were preliminary, like we've just discussed, so they always, for the most part, unless your assessed value goes down, will be lower than your third and fourth quarter tax bills. So, same scenario, you know, it's based upon, the tax rate is based upon per thousand, so the assessed value is 461,500. You have, we're going to take 461.5, multiply it by the FY12 tax rate of $14.38, and I come up to a total tax of $6,636. And if I was to spread that evenly over four quarters, it would be 1669.09. But, you know, that doesn't happen, because these two quarters are based upon FY11 fiscal rate. So, the difference in what we charge, the $1,615 and the $1,669, well, it's $43.84, so we have to catch up for those two amounts in the third and fourth quarter. In the same scenario, for FY13, their assessed value did not change, and so it's still 461,500. First two quarters were based upon the 1,438, which this value, like I said, if we divided it by four, you know, would be evenly over the four quarters, but that doesn't happen. So, we then have a total tax of $7,400, and that divided by four quarters is $1,850. So, the difference between the 1669 and the 1850 is $101, $191. So, we then need to take that and add it to the 1850, which should have been spread over four quarters, and we come up with $2,042 for the remaining two quarters. And then, you will also see, like, we've seen these examples, for FY14, this person's fourth, uh, first quarter and second preliminary of FY14 will be 1850. So, their taxes, based on total tax between the fiscal years, increased $766. Any questions?
Mr. Ford?
Does have a quick question. You had earlier mentioned that the fiscal year 13 maximal level ever was the 40.4 million. What did we end up going to on the note? You said we didn't go to the max.
Twenty-eight thousand less or something.
Twenty-six thousand less, twenty-eight thousand less.
But, historically, you know, when you don't tax till, it's right here on this slide, it's 40,459 is what our, our levy was. So, the maximum was 40, 474, we went to 40,459. So, that's just excess levy capacity. You know, I know it's not a whole lot, but it's still...
But we left it on the table, but it's all right.
Right.
I think Joe was getting excited.
So...
But Liz, if we just take, if we take the difference between last year's tax rate and this year's tax rate, it went up about 11 and a half, 11.6 percent.
Yes.
So, taxes, tax rate went up 11 and a half percent. And we were talking about 11, and, and I think based on the calculation, I was just talking to the town administrator, about three-quarters of that is attributable, attributable to the school debt. So, the rest of it was attributable to general operating expenses.
And previous...
And previous debt.
Yes.
So...
But you'll be able to run that far and give us an actual on that?
I can, very easily, it's just, you know, taking the numbers and jotting it down, so...
But one of, one of the reasons I, you know, we asked to, to just have this little presentation was to give a little bit of comfort to the general public and a little more public education in relation to really what happened on the tax bill. Again, people, a lot of people annualize and say, "23 percent increase, this is crazy." That isn't true. It's really only about 11 and a half percent. If your assessed valuation didn't change, you know, it's 11 and a half percent. And we're just playing catch-up in the last two quarters, that's why it appears to be double what it should be.
Just one more point, with respect to looking at last year's third quarter and this year's third-quarter tax bill, uh, these numbers that we discussed and the rate that they go up, as Steve just said, are really, are predicated on the fact that your appraised value didn't change. The appraised value was also on the tax bill.
Right, right, that's clearly there, so you can compare...
So, one should look at both years to determine whether or not it stayed the same, went up or went down.
Now, I think this example is really good, but if I could just point out, if you're going to send it out, you may want to put the 383 down here as well, to show that you divide it this and half to get that, but you also need to address that goes in this 4.2. So, the way it looks is it only went in the third, but really goes at the fold.
Right, I was, yes.
And I think that's maybe why you were getting a little confused when you were adding the two together.
Doesn't take much, I know, but yeah.
But I think if you add, if you add that, I think this is a very good example. Thank you for doing that. And maybe we keep a couple of those out at your front desk, if people come in, it may be a good tool to help explain it as well.
Thank you for that analysis, and anyone else from the department assisting with it is very helpful and educational.
Maybe we can get a little tax calculator put on the website, who can just plug in what assessed valuation is, what it was, what the change is.
I can see it, that's what I would do, that would be a useful tool.
Go home and get some rest.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Moving on, item three, the one-day alcohol license Hillview Country Club, was Mr. Lee?
Mr. Lee has an engagement that he has to attend to. I spoke with him. He apologizes for not being present.
Sorry.
And I said, "It probably isn't a big deal in relation to, we know what the issue is here." It's not Mr. Lee, and it's not, it's not in North Reading.
What is the update? As of a week ago, I had heard a rumor that it was expected to come through, the license transfer to...
Strictly a rumor. We heard the same rumors, all of the paperwork has been submitted, it's all in order. Unfortunately, it has not been approved yet. The latest questions that we received back from the ABCC were similar to questions that we received back in early December. So, the license has been pending with them so long, they'd be needing to ask the same questions all over again.
Mr. Lee's latest conversation, which was just the end of last week, he anticipates that this should be the last request needed for a one-day license for Hillview. Fingers crossed.
When I spoke to Mr. Lee, I believe he said that the affair is scheduled for February 6th.
There is, it is a date in February.
February 2nd.
It's in the packet.
February 2nd.
He's almost for the...
And, hopefully, this is the last one.
He's anticipating, based upon his conversations with representatives at the ABCC, that they have everything that they need now, and it's just a matter of processing it.
Very good. Thank you for the update. We can proceed to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license to PBL Catering Inc., DBA Hillview Country Club, 149 North Street, for an event to be held on February 2nd, 2013, between the hours of 5:00 PM to 12:00 midnight. Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
The only discussion, Mr. Chairman, is that I think we need to contact our state representative and state senator and ask them to address whatever the issue is with the ABCC, not just in relation to this particular license, but any license. It's not just the towns involved, we happen to be landlord here, but any private owner of, of commercial property that has a change in licensee should not be adversely impacted by the ABCC and Department of Revenue's issues necessarily, when they're totally unrelated and arm-distance transactions. And this is where they get hung up, for the most part. So, there's got to be some sort of corrective action taken, because it's totally contrary to the promotion of private enterprise, economic growth, and anything that goes along with smooth transition from one tenant to a next, to the next. And, you know, fortunately, in our community, you know, the license, we have enough licenses here, where the dollar value associated with a liquor license in the town of North Reading is not the same as it is in, you know, the city of Austin or, or other urban areas, because we have licenses available, they're sold for hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, they're sold for whatever our fee is. You know, in this particular case, you know, we had one tenant here who basically went out of business, didn't get the contract, and folded his tenant, didn't reapply. We have a new, new tenant and a new application, and the ABCC didn't recognize it as a new application, they recognized it as a transfer. They forced it as a transfer, when it wasn't a transfer. It wasn't a transfer from Mr. Page to Mr. Lee, it wasn't at all. It's just as if they vacated the premises, and someone else moved in. So, there's a disconnect here for sure, and it's totally contrary to what the governor, the legislature, and everybody else wants to do as far as economic growth and promoting growth of small businesses. So, I think we need to convey that to our elected representatives to somehow legislatively or regulatory-wise make a correction, as to how it's processed, because this has gone on far too long, and this has been three, four months now.
We have Mr. Jones coming into Financial Planning TV on Friday, and we will discuss this, along with the number of other issues.
Add it to the list, yeah.
Okay, uh, you have nothing further? All in favor?
Aye.
She unanimous. Item four, minutes, first of the January 11, 2013 regular session. Mr. Ford?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 11, 2013 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Frisco?
One second, I got caught up. I did have one question on it, I'm just not sure if this is the one. Nope, I don't, not, not this one.
This is the...
Yeah, this is the special, never mind.
Previous...
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, and one abstention, the chair is abstaining, was not present at that meeting. Motion carries. Minutes, January 14, 2013, regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 14, 2013 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Frisco?
Yes, item nine, amended trash policy. Wasn't it at that particular meeting when we had the discussion regarding what you had proposed, and we had somewhat a lengthy discussion regarding, wasn't it that, at that meeting?
Correct.
But it's not documented in here, and it actually, I don't think it was a unanimous vote, 5-0 either. And I may have it wrong, that's why I'm asking my other board members, do I have it wrong?
What, what page?
On page...
Four.
No. No, we're here. Oh, I'm sorry.
What page in the, uh...
Sorry.
Page four.
No, that's on the minutes, but not in the, uh...
In the other packet. Was it the 14th? Thirty-two.
Thank you. I think if your question is, is 5-0 the correct vote? I voted in favor, it's not as far as I would have liked, was, liked for us to have gone.
And maybe we, maybe we did vote in favor, you're right, Mr. Lee, but I, but shouldn't we have documented the conversation and the, and the recommendation you made?
It's, it's down in the body of, at the bottom of that item nine.
Says other scenarios were discussed, Mr. Lee proposed to reduce the 3.35 gallons to 2.35 gallons. Mr. O'Leary thinks phasing it is a better approach, Mrs. Romeo stated, I'm going to say options to educate.
We can get Oliver, who wants to... Yeah, and I just couldn't remember if we, I thought we had voted, I could have sworn we'd taken some kind of a vote.
We had a consensus as to whether or not...
It was a consensus, never mind. Then, we should at least document that the consensus.
So, as amended? Well, there was no consensus to, to go along with what I had proposed.
Leave it as is, it's perfectly fine, I just wanted to make sure we had it right.
Good.
Done.
Further discussion?
Yeah, it doesn't change anything.
All in favor?
Aye.
She unanimous. Anyone here for public comment?
No, you get another one.
I'm sorry, sorry. I get one more. We have the January 14, 2013 executive session. It was moving too quickly.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 14, 2013 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, she unanimous. Anyone here for public comments? Mim, did you just come to the microphone, state your name and your address, please?
Evening, my name is Norma Pierce, 4 Caroline Road, North Reading. I am here to present to you some documentation that the town administrator requested of me on January 7th of this year, saying that you were seeking it. This documentation is for care of my husband, Richard Pierce, who has served as a firefighter in North Reading for 33 years. Dave Lee, president of Fire, um, union, Captain Joe Marotta, and John Barrett, and I met with the town administrator in this room in December of 2011, and he is now just seeking this documentation from me. In January or February, a medical board was to be convened, he said, and needed a medical release. As my husband lay dying in the nursing home, Joe Marotta brought me the form, and then he delivered it to the town administrator. From then on, I'd sent emails, what's happening, what's going on, I'm still seeking this. Oh, well, I'll deal with that issue next week, I can't this week, because I'm dealing with such and such. Week would come, month would come, no response. This happened two or three times during the summer. In August, he requested another medical release, which was also signed and given to him. In September, after coming back from Colorado, when my husband was on it by the International Association of Firefighters for his duty, I still got no response as to what was happening. I brought the, to the attention of Steve O'Leary, what is happening? I presented paid bills to the town administrator, still no response, other than, who paid the bills, what are their names? I told him, me, myself, and I, the three of us, along with some small payments from the town, which did not even amount to two days' care for my husband. Finally, as I said, January 7th, he requested the documentation, which I present to you, minus one check the bank did not provide, and I'm seeking that still, only for a hundred, um, $1,500. So, here I would like to give this to you, and I do hope that the next time you evaluate this gentleman, that you rate him very high in procrastination, because I believe he deserves the rating.
Just let me say, sorry for the loss of your husband. I know it was documentation that the board had requested, let it be provided when we evaluated the claim. I know it's gone back forth through the last couple of months anyhow, but you can be assured that the board is going to take a look at these...
that the board is going to take a look at these documentations and see what, if anything, we can do. You're welcome. It's valued on itself. Want to say, custody is?
Eddie.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment?
Thank you.
Item six, change of manager, Great American Tavern, 303 Main Street. Gentlemen? Good evening.
Good evening.
Received on a packet of change, a request for change in manager.
Yes.
Please, just identify yourself.
My name is Michael Labo, I'm taking over as the general manager of the Great American Tavern.
Okay.
This is Chuck, the owner.
I've seen Chuck a couple of occasions before. Oh, you?
I'm Phil Carboni, I'm the host DJ.
Oh, no. Sure you want to be here. Sure you want to be here. Wow. Could've said back of the house or something.
I, I heard about that, and I asked Phil to join us.
My pleasure.
All right. Board members, any questions on the change of manager?
My question is, why are you making a change?
Um, new general manager.
No, I know that. Previous one has moved on, or?
Yes. She left the company.
All right. Questions? According to my review of the packet, it seems like everything's all right, you have quite a bit of experience in the industry, so I don't think there's any issue there, but Mr. DJ, step on up.
Yeah. Just want to make sure everything, you know, I've looked at Tom my whole life, but I don't want any problems, I'd like to just pretty much know how low, I know that they're getting something to check the sound on the outside. It's mostly on Thursday nights, I guess we get the complaints.
Chuck, you were in probably a couple of months ago now, so I don't know, we haven't, I haven't heard anything specifically since that time.
So, we've made some changes, so what we're thinking of doing, instead of vans both Friday and Saturday, eliminate one of the two nights and do DJ, because it's easier for him to lower the volume versus a van to lower, because they got to do it, and sound, and all that. But, um, that's one of the changes we're making. Also, Thursday nights is DJ night now, which would probably replace that with karaoke.
With karaoke, so it won't be as loud, the bass won't travel as much.
Music won't be as good, but.
Yeah, so, trying to make changes.
Well, I don't know, you gotta go up there and...
No, not me.
We also, we also are going to purchase a decibel checker, and every half hour, one of the managers will patrol the outside of the building and see how loud the music is, and if any adjustments need to be made, it will be adjusted, and it also will be documented, what the decibel is, so if there is any problem, though, there will be documentation on the sound level during the course of the evening.
And I believe the main problem's bass, I think that's what it is, I turned, I've been, I turned it down completely, pretty much myself over, so it's pretty much just using as something to connect the speakers, so, and it seems to be working, we haven't had any complaints, so.
I appreciate the fact that you've taken some other corrective actions.
Oh, it's fine, yeah.
I for one appreciate it. Mr. Frisco?
Is it okay to ask, if there's any residents while they're up at the podium, they may want to ask some questions, whether they're in the audience?
Sure.
If there's any here.
Is there any residents in the area of the Great American Tavern, or from miles away who hear the noise and have a comment? No, I don't think so.
I wasn't sure, thank you.
Board members? Yes?
I agree. You appear to be well credentialed.
Thank you.
And I got Mr. Carboni, as he said, a lifelong resident, and also donates his time and services to many causes, which we appreciate, and appears to be sensitive to the, to the issue, so that's, that's great.
Last time I saw you, you was getting skatepops.
That was a few years ago.
All right. Is there anything further? Let's take a motion, Mr. Fode.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the change of manager for the all-alcohol calming vigilance for Great American Tavern, 303 Main Street, from Renee Bianchi, Ray M. Bianchi, to Michael Labo.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
She unanimous.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you for coming in.
Moving on, item seven, amend trash policy, second reading. Mr. McGrath, good evening, nice to see you.
Good evening. So, just, I'm not sure what the procedure is here, I just wanted to, it said, Mr. Fode, some statistics through the month of December, of what we're doing year-to-date, and on a month-to-month comparison for December. The plan is, is, we've discussed in last December, and when I was here, December 3rd, that we'd try to provide a quarterly report to the selectmen on what's going on. Trash, from a year-to, year-to-date numbers from FY12 versus FY13, the total tons of trash is down 8.5 percent, the paper is down 11.4 percent, and the co-mingled materials, the glass, metal, and plastic is up 2.8 percent. The recycling rate, right now through December, is 19.2 percent for the town for this material. Year-to-date avoided tip fees is $41,763, last fiscal year, 12, was $88,817. And same with the, the month-to-month, the numbers weren't dramatically different, trash was low, lower by about 34 tons, everything else was a couple percent, you know, less than a percentage point, so nothing really significant, but I'm just, this is an FYI information, and I can, I do this every month for the committee, so I'll just, I'm going to do this on a regular basis, and if you want more detailed or charts, we can do that too, but it's pretty straightforward, just the numbers, so. We proposed, when we last spoke, the talk was to decrease the barrel limit to three-barrel, three 35-gallon barrels, and with the phase-in, two barrels come fiscal year 2014. The board had, Mr. Delaney had mentioned about going right to two. I just wanted to refresh, for the record, is the numbers, right now, there's about 90 percent, 92 percent of the households are doing two barrels or less, and there's another 8 percent that are doing three barrels, according to our cert, this is according, there was a question of where we got our numbers, this is according to the survey that JRM did last May, and there's about 2.5 percent are putting out four barrels or more.
That equals 102. How many percent?
Which one?
Yeah, 8 percent was three-plus.
Right, 2.5 is four or more. 109 households.
That's included in the 8 percent, though.
No.
Well, if you go, 92 and eight plus two, that's 102.5.
Well, I mean, I was doing, I was doing quick math here, and I didn't have a total yet.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. It would appear as though, that 8 percent includes the two and a half.
Yeah.
Would be, if 92 percent are two or less.
90, 90 percent, 90 percent are two or less.
90, okay.
Now that I do the...
Can we get it quicker?
90 percent are doing two or less. 8 percent are doing three, and then 2.5 percent are doing four or more.
2 percent, because that'd be 102.5, okay, close enough.
And then, we had proposed, the recycling committee had proposed adopting a similar program, as Reading had, with the mandatory recycling, and I understand the objections of the board. Further, I did some legwork on that in the last couple of weeks. Part of it, talking to Dick Carnavale, talking to the hauler, actually saw them the next day at a, at a mandatory recycling workshop, and part of the issue that Mr. Messeri raised about where his recycling, his trash has picked up hours, half a day later, or 10 hours later, it's a, it's a management issue, and it's something that could be addressed, and maybe could be addressed with the new contract that's going to be awarded for, for the new fiscal year, at the end of the fiscal year. Something we could revisit down the road, when we see the number, what's going on with the numbers.
Mr. Messeri.
Greg and I had a discussion with JRM.
Yep.
On Friday, in Boston, at the MMA trade show, and we brought that subject up, you know, and they said it, it was feasible to do so, require, requiring changing of the routes, so that both the trash pick up and the...
It's a management issue.
Recyclable issue would fall. He sort of said, though, that it's a lot easier for the, for them to do that in a bigger city, rather than North Reading, where it's so spread out. I think that's got to do with the efficiencies of...
Right, I, I agree, and that's why I think we need to look, we got to peel the onion some more in that, and that, you know, I can't speak to whether it would work or not, or if it's feasible, or, you know, what's, 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 what's an acceptable timeline? Is it an hour? You know, is it, is an hour, you know, certainly what you, the example you gave at your house, where recycling is being picked up before 8 o'clock in the morning, and trash was getting picked up till after 4:00, we got to close that gap, you know, what's, what's, what's an appropriate gap of time? I don't, I haven't, we haven't dug that, dug into that, so, you know, but I think tonight, we're looking for, the committee was looking for, at a minimum, is that we enact the two, to go to three barrels July 1st, 2013, and, and two barrels July 1st, 2014. I, we're volunteers, to re, go through this.
Well, I thought we were all in agreement that that's what we do as of July of 14, so that's why I went right through it, I'm surprised that the policy, as well as the motion, did not include that change as of July 1, 2014.
I was of the opinion we're making, changing this policy.
Come back.
Do we come back and review it?
That's how.
That's not how I understood it, I thought we were phasing it, the fate, we were phasing it in, and the talk was, Mr. Delaney brought up the motion about, the idea about going right to two barrels this coming July, and Mr. Fode and Mr. O'Leary said we're better off to phase it in, go three, and then two the following year. So, I left here on the understanding, and the committee, recycling committee strongly feels that we should, we're a volunteer group, and we have to come back to, you know, the amount of time that puts, that we put into it, add to it next year, we're going to be busy with an outreach campaign, trying to improve the public area recycling, we, we got a lot on our plate, and we're trying to, it's just, you know...
I agree, I don't see why we wouldn't change the policy now.
I guess, the, the issue I have is, is not so much one or two, but there may be some actual faults that need more than two, and not included in here is a solution to that issue, whether they pay more for it, or whatever. I do agree that putting the squeeze on ups the recycling, because right now, you know, you can deal with the four and five-barrel people, they're 2.5 percent, it's nothing, right, even if they continue doing that. So, if we're going to increase recycling, we got to encourage the 80 percent.
Well, I think, I think you're, to leave those, that, that 2.5 percent, we're talking, we're not, we're not making this stuff up, we have a town bylaw for mandatory recycling that was enacted as a requirement of mass waste bans, we're talking about compliance.
I didn't mean to ignore them, all I'm saying is that a program that's going to get the most bang for the dollars is to get more of the majority recycling.
Yep.
Or everybody recycling, for that matter. So, I'm not against the two, but if there's a situation where legitimately people have more than two, how do they deal with it? Well, it was suggested during our conversation, well, they could hold off, and, you know, maybe next week, they've got one barrel's worth, and they can put the, make it up there, they could go to the, across the street to their neighbor, and things like that, but I think there needs to be something in the policy that covers those people that might legitimately have more than two barrels.
So, so do you want to get down to that nitty-gritty in how the DPW manages the nuances of the program? Because Dick and I were talking about having someone where, say I have a graduation party, and I know I'm going to have, despite my hard efforts to recycling, going to have more than two or three barrels of trash, whatever the limit is, that I can call the DPW and saying, this week, I need to do it, the DPW said, let's JRM know that my, my house is okay to pick up the trash, they've called it in, you can manage it, because if I'm calling in every week, then you're going to have a, you know, you're going to have a meeting with the person going, what are you up to? Other, you know, but occasional, one or two times a year, or whatever, you know, I don't see it happening frequently per household, I don't see people throwing big bashes on a monthly basis, so, and then at Christmas time, there's the element of common sense, that all these towns that have enacted these barrel limits, it's common sense, Christmas, Thanksgiving, you take what's out there.
Spring cleaning.
Because, oh?
Which could occur at any time.
But there's other options for, there are other options for spring cleaning, is it metal? We got a, we got a scrap metal bin down at the DPW you can use, you got other, the website, one of the things we're working on is improving the website, and we have a list of alternatives for a lot of goods, home, household goods, clothing, textiles, the stuff that can be, that all can be recycled, doesn't have to go in the trash, and we have outlets, we have information on, that we've done the research, and, and we have contacts and websites, and that, that can be handled, so.
Mr. Frisco?
I'd like, I'd like to explore the option of, why do we have to even wait a year? Why do we, what's the sense of waiting a year? You know, with such a small percentage of people, why can't we do this in six months versus over a year? Again, going back to what I brought up the last time we had this discussion, if the goal is to save on trash and to increase recycling, and we all buy into that, then why are we giving a year for such a small percentage of people?
As, as I said to Mr. Delaney last time, you don't have to twist my arm that hard and that long on local access cable to get me to go along, so.
Just a couple of comments, first of all, as Mr. Messeri pointed out, and pointed out, you know, 90 percent of the people who are participating here are two barrels or less. If we're going to increase recycling, it does have to come from that 90 percent. This additional 8 percent, I mean, how much more recycling, on a percentage basis, are they going to generate for us in order to save more money in recycling? I mean, newspapers are down because more people are subscribing online, they're reading the newspapers online and not having them delivered to their homes. So, some of the comments that I've received over the last few weeks is that, so let me get this straight, you want to continue to charge me $256 a year and not be allowed to put what I'm allowed to put out now, so you're going to charge me the same and allow me to put out less? And these are people who only put out a barrel or two, but this, they just like the idea of being able to put it out if they need to put it up.
Do they recycle? Because the other stats we have here in that survey was that 11.5 percent of the households do not put out recycling.
I, most, again, most of the people that are...
That's 500 homes, that's 500 homes.
They say that they recycle, I mean, you know...
I know, I'm not saying, there's 500, almost, just under 500 homes that weren't putting out recycling bins when we did this survey.
Mm-hmm.
So, granted, some people might not, you know, I'm not saying these are hard...
They're not putting out recycling, but they're still less than two barrels, that's what I'm saying. Most of what we need to make up here, as far as public education, is the savings that are going to be realized by the majority people continuing or participating in the recycling program. That's where we're going to make it up. We're going to make up some with this other 8 to 10 percent, for sure, and those are the ones that we want to target and say, hey, come on, get on board. But really, if we're going to save, it's going to come from the 90 percent of people who are already participating and putting out less than two barrels, you know, two or few barrels a week. So, again, the feedback, the people, of course, the general feeling right now is government's too big, government's intruding too much, and here we are, you're still charging me the $256 a year, and you're telling me I can't put out, no, more than three, but more than two, trying to bring it down to two from four. Again, so as far as phasing it in, I still think that's a viable educational process to get more people to buy in, to participate, even those who are only putting out one or two, getting to realize that, you know, as you recycle, it saves us money, and as a result, their trash fee is not going to increase. It may not decrease, but it's not going to increase, you know, the possibility of it increasing is greater if they don't participate, so.
And the fact, the fact that if you are recycling, putting out two barrels and recycling, you're subsidizing the guy who's not, but not recycling.
Right, but that's, that's the small minority, again, and again, we're always in a position where we're, we're legislating to address the minority, not the majority. So, and so that's why I propose, you know, embrace the idea of phasing this in, to help with the educational process, and I think it's important that the board, again, discuss it again next year as we come up again, to, to let people know what the process is, how much we're looking to save, how it saves, and hopefully enticing more people to participate in reducing the amount of trash we put into the, the stream, so. But that, that's what the feedback I've been getting the last few weeks.
Mr. Fode?
So, Ed, I mean, I respect the amount of work that the recycling committee does, but I've received, similar to Steve, the biggest feedback I've gotten, other than, other than the schools, have been what's going on now, you've read it in the paper, but I've gotten calls, or people grabbed me at my daughter's basketball game, or something like that, and realistically, it's people probably, who tell me they put out two barrels, but again, what Steve said, I'm paying the same amount, but I'm, I'm getting less. And I'm not saying, I agree wholeheartedly with what, what you're recommending, I just think we need to phase it in, I think, you know, a little at a time.
I'm, I'm not arguing with that.
No, I know that.[1798.91]
That's what I'm saying.
No, I know that. I'm commenting on Michael's proposal, that's all.
I'm just saying, what I'm asking for is, can we get the vote for both ones tonight, so I don't have to come back over the course of three meetings next year?
I agree with you. I don't know why we belabor this as much as we are. I thought I left the last meeting thinking that's where we're headed. So I don't get it, though. So why are we making the change to three, then, if we're not, if your argument is, well, it's only 2.5 percent, we've got to educate the 90. Why even, the other argument is, why even go to three? I mean, I'm not in favor of not doing something, but it just doesn't make sense. If you're saying we've got to preach to the masses that the 90 percent are doing two or less for them to recycle more, then we shouldn't make a move at all with four barrels. I mean, that's, to use your logic. I mean, that's the sense, Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying. I mean...
What I'm saying is, a lot of it's perception. It's numbers and it's perception. It doesn't have to do necessarily with logic. It has to do with perception, you know, and the public perception. The feedback is, no, again, you can look at the numbers all you want. You know, 90 percent are two or less, you know. So we're talking about legislating here and changing the rules for the other 8 percent, to force them to get down to, you know, the two barrels, and that's fine.
And if we can lower the trash, if it's discussed, we get to lower the trash.
But again, whatever this, you know, whatever this 8 percent is going to produce from going from four to three, and then three to two, it's going to be something. But it's not going to get us to the goal that they're looking at, to save, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year.
Well, that's the straight, I mean, that's the big target.
That's the big target, that's the big goal. And we're behind the eight ball already with a greater participation level than we were last year. Part of that is because newspapers have been delivered to the households. So it's an educational process, and as much as, you know, I recognize the volunteerism and appreciate it, you know, as much as anybody, I think you're coming here and are discussing it as part of the educational process, which might resonate with somebody and get them to participate a little bit more. And I think the discussion, if you do it now, and we're not going to have it again next spring, or, you know, next winter, that's another opportunity lost.
Frisco?
Ed, let's just say the scenario is three barrels. When you go out and you do an RFP, is that how they're going to bid it? Like, everybody's going to pick up three barrels?
I don't, I'm not privy to what's in there. That's specific to the RFP.
Why do you say RFP? Is that tonnage, right? What are you talking about? If you put an RFP out, are you going to tell the contractor they only have to take three barrels?
Well, I'm just assuming. If I'm the contractor and you're telling me you're allowing your residents to put out three barrels...
Correct.
Then they're going to do some type of calculation based on everybody putting out three barrels.
Really? Because the cost of picking up, whether it's three barrels or four barrels, doesn't change. It's the tonnage that makes the difference. The tonnage is included in the RFP. They pay that separate.
Okay, so, Fodi, then if the scenario is to two barrels, is it still going to charge the same as if we're going to pick up three barrels?
I would think so. I would be, because it's, the cost is not in the person picking up the barrel and dumping it. The cost is in the gas, the cost to get to their property. The cost is in having two people on a truck to drive down that street. So it doesn't take much more time to throw one more barrel in. You're going to see the difference in tonnage, and that's it. So you'll save money in the tonnage, but you're going to save money in tonnage where the, you know, it's all based on how much actual tonnage is out there.
An example, Mike, typically, unless we've had family over on a weekend, our barrel has got one kitchen bag in it. They're going to pick that up and have to empty it. If I didn't recycle, because I've got one bin, I have it all in that one barrel. You follow me? So they'd still be picking up the barrel.
I'm not, I understand, okay, but what, all you're saying, none of it makes sense to me.
What's it in there?
If I'm a contractor, and you're telling me that restriction is maximum of two barrels, you have to assume that that is less tonnage that they're going to pick up in a week's time. Has to be.
But they might get it more in the, you know, it's, you can't isolate just that, because if you're going to do that, you get more recycling, so your recycling truck's going to be busier, maybe longer per household. And if you're talking 15 seconds per household in 4,000 homes, you're talking a significant time, piece of time, where trash, the time they're going around, the time it takes them to do their routes. And I don't know how that fits into the contract. I'm not that involved with the contract.
It just goes into different trucks.
But the savings is on the tonnage, in terms of, if you go to two barrels...
That's your variable, your variable cost is the tonnage.
A tonnage is naturally going to decrease if you limit it to two. That's where the savings comes in.
That's right.
That's what I'm trying to say.
No, I see, you're approaching it wrong.
Okay.
The solution is to get people educated, right? And people are paying a fair price to get their trash picked up. I'm on Steve's side here. And to treat them like children doesn't help at all. You know, I'd rather see, I think it's fair to go to three, because, you know, that may be a reasonable number based on the fact that a lot's number are only a two. But when they want it, when they need three, they don't want to be penalized by it. They don't want to have to call a DPW garage and say, "I got to put out three today." I mean, to me, that's silly. I think that...
There's a question?
I think Meg might have something to say.
Mrs. Robinson?
I'm just really frustrated. The other issue with your three barrel, and I understand what you're saying, but majority of the items we generate as trash, majority of it is recyclable somewhere around the route that we can pick up and recycle. So regardless if you have a big party, or you have an event, or Christmas, majority of Christmas stuff, we'll use Christmas as an example, boxes, presents, paper, that's all recyclable. That's not trash. So I think you're also looking, not looking at the right paradigm in regards to what's trash and what's recyclable, and that if you have an extra barrel of items, whatever it is, most of that's recyclable, you put an extra recycle bin out. We've had a mandatory solid waste ban on items since 1990 for the entire state of Massachusetts. That's including paper, cans, plastic, majority glass. This is 1990. So part of my frustration is listening to this, is this should have been implemented years ago, and we'd be saving more money, and maybe the trash fee would be, it's very expensive, I understand that. I have no argument with that. But that's the cost of doing business for getting the trucks to come around. And we can't fix that except by lowering the tonnage fee and saving money that way. And the more we go back with one barrel, two barrels, three barrels, we're still, we're just, we're not moving along, even with three barrels. I would be acceptable with the three barrels and with the two barrels. I'd rather go with two barrels, because to me, it makes more sense, and it gets people more on board and looking at what they can, they're throwing away versus what they don't need to throw away and put in the recycle bin, and putting in another bin that's taken. That's kind of what you should be looking at, rather than, "I need an extra barrel because I'm having a big party." I mean, that, again, is a policy issue that DPW can deal with on very unique circumstances. I don't think it needs to be in the policy that if I have a party five times a year, I get it, that no matter what I put out, I can put out five barrels. I think that just defeats the purpose, unless it's very unique and it's discussed with, individually with the DPW. I don't think we're teaching, we're treating people as children at all. I disagree with that. I know some people feel that way with big government, or whatever they want to call it, but it's not.
Thank you. Mr. Fodi?
And I wholeheartedly agree. My only issue is, it's very difficult to go from, you know, cut it in half in one year. That's also, again, my recommendation, we go from three to two.
But we're not cutting in half. We're not cutting in half except for a small minority group of people.
Right, but it's allowed. People have that ability to do so.
Can I ask you, are you opposed if we implement three as of July 1st of this year, and then two, reduce it to two barrels as of July 1st of 2014? Are you opposed to that?
No.
Okay.
My preference would have been to go with the original motion, but I have no problem with that.
Again, I just think it's important to have the discussion this time next year, as part of the educational process. Again, I'm not opposed to go eight to two, but I'm not necessarily doing it tonight.
We can have the discussion.
But I'm afraid that if we do, sometimes we don't have the discussion. If we do, it's that's the policy, it's going to be the same.
One of the agreements came out was that the recycling committee would report quarterly to the board. So we're going to be, we're going to be talked, there's going to be a conversation, whether it's necessary for someone from the committee to come and do this face to face, or, you know, in communication with Mr. Fodi, he's going to get the numbers. He says, "Hey, why don't you, you know, come in?" And, you know, I know we've had a pretty much welcome mat. If we wanted to come and present when Mr. Messeri was chair, if there was, we thought there was a need to come forward, he was always encouraging us to do so. It's not like that. I think that the communication's going to be there. You're going to see the numbers, if you want to see the numbers tracked. I can go back to fiscal year 2003 with numbers. I have them. I've been, you know, capturing that data, anally capturing this data in a spreadsheet, so we can, you know, manipulate it if need be, you know, to what you want, what do you want to compare, whether it's month to month, year to year, we can do that. You know, I just think, it's just, I'd rather spend my time, we're working on doing the public education right now. We had our meeting this past week. Bruce McGrathel, who's sitting here, he's also on the committee. Bruce is going to be working with Mark Clark in fixing up the website, updating it, getting it pertinent information that's easily accessible, so people can get information via one click. You know, we have the Facebook page, still trying to get to 100 friends, my quest.
How many, what?
About 80, you know.
I'll do it tonight, so you have 81.
Twenty more, 21.
So, you know, I mean, this is what, we're trying to reach out and find different ways. You know, we're working on some stuff. It's just, it's getting the education. We've already contacted the town. The next mailing's going out in two weeks. Don't, I think it's the trash bill, the six, we have to get, we're going to take the matrix of what's recyclable, what's accepted in the program. We want it, we're going to get that printed up and have it stuffed in the envelope, so it'll go out with the bills.
But I think as part of your mailing, Meg's comments tonight would resonate, you know, Christmas time, 90 percent of what you have is recyclable.
Yep.
You have the wrapping paper, the boxes. You know, you need to sometimes bring it down to that level, instead of saying...
Well, look, people are telling us, we're getting pressure from other...
I know, but I think what you said, what Meg said tonight, you know, rings.
Steve, I know you liked that.
I did like it.
I know, you just want to...
Ed, you said you spoke to the Carnival DPW, and he's on board with the three and two? Because when it's all said and done, we're going to, we're going to take a vote here, and he's going to get the phone calls.
The next morning, the next morning, I was over at the DEP office in Wilmington. Dick was there, Tom Flanagan was there, and he asked me how it went. And I said, "Three, you know, three this July, and two the following July." That's how I understood when I left here.
Okay.
And he was fine with it, yeah.
Okay. And the other, I'm sorry if I can just... Is there an instance where you'll be back maybe next year, and we'll be discussing mandatory recycling again?
I think we, I think it's something we keep looking at, maybe. I'm not closing the door on it.
Okay.
I don't know what the pressure is. I mean, Joe, you've heard the stuff, you know, zero waste. There's these groups within the recycling community saying we should be at zero waste, to which I say it's a magnificent goal.
Right.
I've still got people asking me, "Can I recycle my Cheerios box?" We're not there yet. You know, I just, you know, the state's putting out a ban on...
Organic.
Organic waste for businesses in 2014, and for residents in 2015. So we're going to have to go around and have a slop truck picking up all the slop.
Reverting back to the old days.
Yeah, you know.
We had that when I grew up.
We had that. I know, but this is, this is where the state, the state keeps putting out these bans, and I keep asking, and I keep pushing back, where are we going to bring it? Where inside, in the greater Boston area, are you going to bring it to make it realistic that you're going to be able to do it? And everyone's going, "Well, nobody wants it. It's NIMBY issue. Nobody wants a compost pile in their backyard," you know, big hunking compost pile. It's one thing to do leaves, it doesn't really have a smell, but you start doing food waste.
Mr. Frisco?
You know, we got to the $226 that people are paying annually for the trash.
$56, yeah.
No, it's $226, no.
$22, I'm sorry.
That's, you know, for four barrels today, even if we did nothing, it wouldn't be $226, right? If we did nothing, we didn't change anything, it was going up higher than $226, I would assume.
We don't.
Based on your feedback.
I don't know.
It depends on the tipping fee. When the tipping fee goes up...
Depends on the contract.
There's a lot of things, a lot of factors going on.
But also, the big thing that we're, with the contract we currently have, it's the difference of the tipping fee. We've been able to stabilize it somewhat. So regardless of what happens, it could possibly go up. I'm assuming if we keep our recycling up and the trash going down, that the tipping fee, even though if it goes up, the trash goes down, it won't cost us, it'll be a wash. It won't go any higher. We like to keep it stable, the trash fee. It includes a lot of different stuff, but majority, that's one of the bigger costs, is the tipping fee issue, which is estimated, they can't, depends on how much stuff we get. So we, our hope was eventually to lower the trash fee, but right now it hasn't, we haven't been able to get that, enough savings to negotiate that, whatever it is, down to save money. We're at least trying to keep it not going up, and it can easily go up.
You're asking for this change, but you're not 100% sure we'll even see any change in what we're paying.
We don't have, we don't have control over the, I have no input on the, what's the contract going to be, Mike? I don't know, I know, this is, we don't have control over some of these numbers. You know, if the contract goes, if the price for the contract goes down, the new contract, if it's less money, the tipping fee's going up $2 a ton next year, we know that. That's already contracted. I'm not sure what, I don't have it in my brain of what it goes on beyond that. You know, does it go down? Do you lower the trash fee? You know?
The cost to pick up, that portion of it, is on this kind of a slope. In order to flatten it out, you've got to continually reduce the amount of tipping.
Yeah, and all fitness, the only thing that's fixed is, is the contractors' cost to collect. Other than that, tonnage could vary. Even if you know, even if you know the cost per ton, it's all about how much tonnage is actually put out. That's the only way you're going to know.
It's a variable cost.
You'll never know.
Yeah.
I'd ask a favor. You're putting this information in this next trash billing?
Yep.
Could you add a list of the materials that could be brought to the DPW garage for disposal? You mentioned...
Right now, it's scrap metal.
Scrap metal and oil.
Well, I would put that in there. I'm not sure everybody knows that.
Yeah. But right now, it's scrap metal. When it comes spring, then it's, you know, used oil and yard waste, and then we have the various, then we have the various collections.
It would help to have that information distributed.
Yep. Well, there's plenty on the plate of what to publicize, it's just a matter of time to do it, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Let's read the motion.
Okay, I'll read the motion. "Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the second reading of the Solid Waste Use a Fee Regulations adopted by the Board of Selectmen on June 17, 2002 by adding the following: Effective July 1, 2013, the weekly solid waste limit will be three 35-gallon bags or barrels per home."
Second. The motion is second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation or amendment to the motion. So in number 12, it talks about effective July 1, 2013, the weekly solid waste will be three barrels, three, uh, five, 35-gallon barrels, bags per home. Can we add a 13 and make it effective July 1, 2014, the weekly solid waste will be limited to two 35-gallon bags or barrels per home?
Is that your motion, your amendment?
My amendment's to, you're right, to add another line, number 13.
Understood. Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Harry, now?
Great.
I'm sorry, good.
All in favor of motion as, on the amendment? Aye.
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 All opposed. Okay. On the amendment, amendment carries. Now, on the main motion, which is...
Main motion as amended.
Main motion as amended, which includes the paragraph 13, effective July 1, 2014, the weekly...
Solid waste limit will be three 35 ga, I'm sorry, two 35-gallon bags or barrels per home. Sorry.
Motion as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is unanimous.
Just a comment. I've supported it on the basis that we're going to get reports on a quarterly basis, and we'll also hear from the neighbors, I'm sure. And it's not too late to amend it again before an action...
To one barrels?
To zero waste.
Everybody give me a jury look, I have to say something.
I concur with Mr. Messeri's reasoning.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you.
Mrs. Robinson, Mr. McGrathel, as always, thank you. Job well done. Mr. McCottrell for...
Good night now.
Thank you for everything.
All right, Town Administrators Report.
Good evening. I would ask you to refer to the gold copy in your packet, and I will stick to script. There is one additional item that I do have. In your packet, you'll note that there is a resignation... In your packet, you'll note that there is a resignation from my Director of Youth Services, Erica Hanson, and I've accepted it with regret. Erica, as you know, has served in her job for a couple of years, and she's done a really good job with growing youth opportunities in North Reading, my judgment, reaching out and finding a very broad group of young people that she has worked with, and I wish her well as she moves on to other professional opportunities in about a week and a half.
I think she's done just a tremendous job, falling on the heels of her predecessor who also started and kicked off this department of youth services, she's just taken it to a new level, she's going to be sorely missed, and I wish her nothing but the best as she heads off with her fiancee to New York City. Mr. Messeri.
Having worked with Erica on the Community Impact Team and knowing the kind of energy that she brought to that committee and the effort that she put in to get things done, she's going to be sorely missed, I wish her tremendous success in the future, her future endeavors.
Mr. Prisco.
Aye, she will be, that's going to be a big shoes to fill. Erica, coming in from day one, it was amazing, I was on the youth services committee as their liaison, and from the first day she came in, it was almost like she had been here forever. She really has a way about her, making you comfortable and getting right involved, she works very hard and she gets really involved, and she sorely will be missed, but she was a great hire, Greg, and she did a fantastic job, and I do wish her best in her fiancee marriage.
We hope that we're so lucky next time around.
Lucky the first two times.
Yeah.
Keep our fingers crossed.
We're two for two, let's, let's keep it going.
I would, you know, if I could just add, it would, it would be great if there was a, a young person that's gone through our system, through our youth services system that is now older and interested in this opportunity, I think it would be wonderful to see a local resident, young person, to have the opportunity to fill this position, I think it would be pretty good for the community, and I encourage them, if they're all listening, I hope they apply for the job.
Great. Next on the list is, the board's efforts have resulted in a settlement with defendant Walgreens in Richmond, North Reading on the ROC Construction litigation. As you know, this was a case that was opened seeking payment for unpaid police details dating back now almost three years, so two of the cases have been settled, we've received the sum of $5,000. The major defendant in the case is ROC Construction, it remains to be seen where that case is at this point, but we've not received any monies in it. Good news is, we've received a little bit back at this point. Next is, the board has copies of two arbitration appeals, which have been filed by Teamsters Local 25, they represent the DPW and our sergeants and patrol officers. The DPW appeal is a case that seeks to overturn my decision not to grant employees four hours of overtime pay for services that were performed by Hurricane Sandy, which the DPW alleges was their work, and they allege that it was done through another department. And the police department case is arbitration seeking to clarify the annual sick leave buyback language for existing offices in the department under the new collective bargaining agreement. I don't think either one of those two cases is really a surprise, we've talked about them a little bit. They will be referred to counsel, the town will diligently pursue discussions if it's possible to settle, we'll bring those settlements before the board for consideration. Typically arbitration is a three to six month process before we even have a hearing. Next is a, there's a letter in your packet from Bayside Engineering, and if you've taken the time to read it, I would ask you to look at the summary, but what it does is it involves monies that were earmarked in the 2012 State Transportation Bond Bill, not the board bill, but the bond bill, and there was $250,000 and $350,000, which were programmed for Central Street and Tower Hill Road in those amounts. And based upon an analysis which has been provided by the town's consulting engineer and additional comments through the Mass DOT District 4 office, we're now very skeptical about North Reading receiving any of those monies. They indicate that the projects are often put in the bond issue, and cities and towns don't receive anything at all. The Central Street project, however, is eligible to be placed on the MPO tip list, which is, the board may be aware, is an extensive process that's through the Metropolitan Planning Council, however, the town would need to come up with design costs, and as the summary indicates, the design costs are approximately two years' worth of Chapter 90 money, and they would not necessarily be, in my judgment, an effective use of what those costs would be. So again, that Central Street would revert to completing it on a phased approach over a period of years, but I don't see us receiving funding at this point on that project. I'll defer to the board.
Mr. Fode.
Greg, you're saying that Central can go on the tip?
Yes.
But that the design is going to be.
What do we get for Chapter 90 on an annual basis?
About 470.
So you're telling me design for, for Central would be 470?
No, 750. 750.
Design?
Design.
That means it's a seven and a half million dollar project?
Four plus.
Design is typically 15, top, 15%, 10 to 15%.
I understand, we'll go back and we'll look at that number.
What is tip?
I'm sorry, what is tip? What is that again?
Tip, tip is defined, if you get out to the letter from the engineer?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's defined in the, I'm sorry, I don't know it off the top.
I'll explain.
Transportation Improvement Program, got it.
Yeah, it's.
Got it. Thank you.
There's a committee that approves.
I haven't had a chance to read it, so.
We could pursue that, but the monies would be years out, typically what they do is they program it many, many, many years out, but we'd have to front the design costs, that's the bottom line.
Talking, if you've gone on for your next year, you're talking, you wouldn't get, you wouldn't see the money till at best 2017.
Wow.
But if you don't get on.
Right, you have to get on, right.
You don't get anything.
If you don't get on, you don't get anything, correct.
I mean, so I would think other municipalities are on the same boat, so that the number of municipalities that are actually participating is probably very few, I have to defer to Mr. Fode.
It's a, it's a, it's a lengthy, it's a lengthy process, it, there's a committee that, you know, some of their communities are even fighting for the same money, so if you, typically it's a three-year, at best three, no, no, it's the city, Chelsea doesn't have representative, ever does.
No, and the positions are elected amongst the communities that are in the region, so.
Right, but it's a, it's typically a three-year process, you have to go in with 25% design first, and then they tell you the process and how much percentage they require before they'll even put you on the queue.
The risk is you come up with the design, you pay for it, and then you get, you get deferred.
It's, it's very rare that you get denied totally, but it's all depending on how far out you're going to be. I mean, I've seen projects go six, seven years out.
But the design plans will not necessarily change.
Not necessarily, I mean, somewhat, but you don't have to go in to get on the queue, you only need 25% design to get application, so it's, it might be something worth looking at.
Right. Because how else are we going to get Central Street done?
So, correct.
That would be the alternative.
Right, I mean.
And that's why the question was, how much you think it's going to cost the design? I think you may want to go out for, for RFPs on design, if you're talking that kind of money, that's, that's a lot of money, but also, if you're doing, the problem is, is too, is if you go the tip, it's typically, you have to go by their specifications, sometimes the projects end up being more money than what you would normally do yourself, because they may require sidewalks.
Extended ways.
So.
Could be taking.
So we just, we just did a project now that, in Chelsea, that's, you know, we ended up getting it at 6.2 million, but if we went the tip route, it probably would have cost us closer to seven and a half million.
But you paid it all yourself.
But.
But you get a better product.
But we paid it all by ourselves, and you get a product that's, that's acceptable to the state.
It has to be constructed to their standards, which again, with the right of way and such.
I would, I would, my personal opinion is I would have Dick maybe talk to some engineering firms and find out what the minimum we would have to cost, is have to spend to at least get the ball rolling, and then what 25% design would cost.
Mr. Messeri and I had an opportunity to rub elbows with many engineering firms at the MMA conference, who are all quite anxious to do business with the town of North Reading.
With any of them.
Correct. Yeah, I personally think we should take a little closer look at it, and conversely, if we just abandoned it, say we're not going to do that, then we have to come up with a game plan as to how we're going to attack Central Street, which is one of the major crossroads to the community and probably one of the most in need of upkeep, maintenance and repair. So it's, you know, so if we don't spend the Chapter 90 money here for this, you know, maybe we're going to be bonding anyway, maybe we go on the design fees and spread it out over a number of years, since it's going to be a number of years before it comes to fruition, and still have enough money left over for, for other, other road improvements, but to, yeah, I wouldn't totally abandon it.
I agree.
You know, it's an investment, it is costly, but it's something, the infrastructure's something.
Can't ignore it.
Well, we do, we tend to put it off.
Right.
You know.
This one we can't put off.
And the only, you know, I mean, the thing you're going for you is that you don't have a lot of subservice work to do on Central, so that may, that could put it higher up in the queue, because a lot of communities, what will happen is, they have a lot of subservice work, they have millions on subservice work, they have to wait until they can get the money elsewhere for that stuff, and then tip puts it on the back burner. Because we only have 50 water services, what I'm being told, could be something that could be done quicker rather than later.
Thank you, I appreciate the comments. In the packet is a certification from the Department of Housing and Community Development reaffirming the Smart Growth District for the Berry Center. I did speak with the planning director, and the reason why I wanted to put this in here is there are often questions that come up about the percentage of affordable housing, and I've asked her to confirm how close we are, or are we at the 10% standard, which is established under state law, under Chapter 40B. I expect that information shortly, and I will share it with the board, but my understanding is we are close, if not at, the 10% limit according to the CPC planner.
What does this recertification mean?
Excuse me, it, it just means that we're in compliance in those housing units, there are 412 housing units that contoured our affordable housing stock. If we were somehow to fall out of favor and not be recertified, those would not contoured our 10% goal.
Is this done on an annual basis?
It is.
And it goes away at 20 something, does it not?
Some point.
So the, the gain you get from 75% of those apartments goes poof.
Well, we actually got a gain of 100%. We got a gain of 100% of those apartments because they were all rental?
No, I understand, what I'm saying is that when that expires, that, that doesn't go on forever.
That's right.
That expires, so 75% of them go away. The 25 were built as affordable, real affordable.
Yeah, but the, but the affordability on those units also goes away after a certain period of time, it's not in perpetuity.
That's what I.
Yeah, there are some points, so actually you lose 100%.
You lose.
But we're going to lose 400, 400 units, we're going to, 406 affordable units that we can credit for now are going to go away, and you have to make up for it. In addition to that, when we picked up those 406 units, there's 41 more units that we had to, 10% of those added to our inventory, as far as what we need to do to meet the 10%, so I'll be surprised, I'll be interested to see where we're at, because, you know, based on the census, it'll, it'll tell us how many housing units, 10% have to be affordable. We picked up 406, so basically 41 more to meet our quota, we got the credit for the 400. So it's, every time you add 10 affordables, you have to add one more to make up the 10% because it gets, it gets added to the inventory. So we were able to take care, I mean, we were less than 2% of meeting our goal until this project came through, and if you recall, we had a lot of 40B applications coming in because we were ripe for the picking, and this happened to take care of that problem and concentrate it all on one particular location and take care of it for a few years, but as Mr. Messeri points out, 25 years or so, well, now it's probably about 20 years or so, those will expire, and we're going to have to come up with another 400, 450 units of affordable housing, so something to keep on the radar screen.
Keep it on the radar screen, Mr. Valiakos.
Speaking of CPC, the planner has been working, as you know, there was the medical marijuana dispensing facilities, I've spoken with the CPC planner, they are preparing a proposal for presentation to the town. So there's some discussion about the timing of that, I've asked them, they're researching in terms of, they will be.
A presentation or a warrant article?
A warrant article, but they also have to, they will be, want to have a work meeting, which they will publicize, because I think there are different opinions in terms of whether the town should prohibit such facilities or limit facilities to certain areas in the community. Before an article was crafted, they really want to gauge what the public opinion is of the community, but also the policymakers of the town in terms of whether it should be prohibited or simply restricted to certain areas. Some additional work to be done.
I got failure that it's going to go the way of the Delta Entertainment District, but that's probably where it's going to shake out when our state courts take a look at it.
Some communities have done an outright ban.
I know they have, but I think.
Whether those hold remains to be seen.
That's going to be subject to.
Remains to be seen.
An overturn.
In your packet was a letter from a resident who has submitted a request to acquire some property located off of Oakdale Road. I had an opportunity to speak to the resident and ask him what his interest was, and he indicates that he owns land located across Oakdale Road, and he wishes to seek a building permit and construct a septic disposable system. Because of the way his lot is configured, there's not suitable dry ground on the lot located across the street for that purpose, and without advocating for or against the proposal, I indicated that the town does have a municipal review procedure, and if the board, was it the board's pleasure, we could schedule a hearing once that process is complete, but really before we started, the question is whether the board would be in favor of at least considering it at this point. I didn't get a chance to, my guess is this is up at Oakdale Road Extension. Yes, it is. Sort of. And it's, the current lot that the gentleman owns has not been built upon yet, so it's not necessarily to improve or expand the opportunity for a current dwelling, and if I, looking at the map, I can't tell for sure, but my guess is it's pretty wet, and across the street is not.
What number is his lot?
It's located directly across the street, I don't have the, the number.
Well, you have two highlighted, so is both of those, he wants to purchase both of those?
Yes.
So is that lot 32 and 31?
Yes.
His lot's on the other side of Oakdale?
48.
So he's going to cut across our road and install. He owns 47, I assume. Oh, 47.
47 is owned by the town.
47 is owned by the town?
Correct.
Which one does he own?
48.
He owns 48.
Well, it's 48. What is it, this one here?
There's presently a house that's constructed on the lot.
On 48?
Correct, which accesses from one of the streets in the back.
Uh-uh.
So it's off the map, right where your right-hand side?
Yeah.
So there's access that comes in from that side, it's a relatively new home. He's presented the Community Planning Commission with an approval not required to subdivide, not subdivide, but to create two approval not required lots.
Oh, okay.
And so what he's doing is, he's, he will, he's got a property, the home that's got access with frontage on another street.
He's looking to create one on Oakdale.
And he wants to create one on Oakdale, but he does not have sufficient space to be able to accomplish that.
Interesting story. Mr. Fordy.
Greg, so, let me, see if I understand the script. He wants, he wants the Lot 31 and 32 so he can put septic there.
Correct.
So he's going to trench across Oakdale Road. That would require a right away, wouldn't it?
Yes. Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
I'd like another picture of, there's a new home that was just put in. It's off of School Hill Lane at the end of the cul-de-sac.
That's it.
But its address, I believe, is Juniper. Juniper runs across Oakdale Road to School Hill Lane, on Paper, it's Paper Street. If you recall, Mr. Day and his neighbor up there at the end of Lee just purchased the lot across the street, across the Paper Street from where his new home was just built. Who's the people at the end of Lee Road, two little twins, and Peter Day just came in and purchased some town-owned land from us, which goes from Mr. Day's property to School Hill Lane.
Galeno.
Correct.
Galeno.
Right, okay. So they just purchased, this is directly across, right next door, but in between them is Juniper Road to the Paper Street, and they just built a new home there. And I think 48 is, is, is next to it, next to the new home.
Can you just tell me, point to it on this map?
Where are we at?
So it's the middle school?
It's the middle school.
It's the School Hill Lane?
School Hill Lane. They just built the house right here. Mr. Day and Mr. Lee, just, Mr. Day and Mr. Galeno, just bought here, right in here.
Very good.
This is Peter Day's house, right here. So he bought from here all the way, bought from here to here, and he's splitting it with this gentleman, this family here. From here to here is what he bought. This gentleman owns here and I think here.
Can you show me where that town-owned land is on there? All right, whatever. So this must be the town-owned land here.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Oh, okay.
School Hill Road's right here.
Yeah.
This is the new home. It's on this little block right...
It's mine.
This is what Mr. Day and Mr. Galeno just bought, this pink one here. This little box right here is where the gentleman just built the new home, but he's accessing it off of School Hill Lane. If you look, this is Juniper, Paper Street. Juniper actually goes, stops right here, Oakdale Road Extension comes up here, but Juniper actually goes, on Paper's here. This is the lot he owns, right here. This one here, right behind this one. So this one he accessed off of School Hill. He's looking to access this one off of Oakdale Road Extension and purchase these two little pink lots here. This is what he owns, it's 48. This one or this one? This one, I guess. Looking to purchase these, this one here, looking to purchase. This is all wet in here.
Seven.
Probably two-thirds of it. Be able to probably build a home here if he can get a septic system over there.
Exactly.
If he can pick up the town-owned land. He won't be able to get...
Permit.
For a septic, I don't believe, but...
I would, I'd like to hear from CPC before we made any ruling or decision on what their thoughts are.
We haven't started the municipal review process, which is soliciting input from all the boards and communities and departments. We'll do it only if the board says, "Do it." We do it every year in the summertime for all town-owned land, but as these requests come up, occasionally, we want to bring them before you because this is probably one of those issues that if we waited until August or July, the opportunity might not exist anymore, so we want to bring them before you.
I believe, I believe he has enough frontage on Oakdale Road Extension.
I believe so.
And he has enough square footage.
He just can't get...
To be deemed as a, as probably a buildable lot, but he won't get a septic permit unless he buys some high and dry land, or puts in a tank, you know, that he has to be pumped every third week. My initial reaction is, I don't know if it's in the best interest of the community to strike a deal with this particular individual. Now, that doesn't mean that the other abutts here might not be interested in the land, you know, that directly abut, Oakdale Road Extension.
Right, right.
I have some reservations, but certainly it wouldn't be at the nominal $1,500 that the agreement has been typically going for, that's for sure.
These grandfather lots, they are grandfather lots, as I understand, which means they are buildable unless there's a restriction that's put on them. And the individual indicated he'd have no problem with a restriction.
I'm sure. The lot itself actually goes through the road to...
That's what it looks like.
I don't know, it's, highlights coming down here. The director butters, the director butters to these two town-owned land parcels are actually off of Maple Street.
Maple Street. What's that?
The director butters to these two parcels...
Yep.
Are on Maple Street, which is, runs parallel to Oakdale Road Extension, closer towards Winterberry off of Central Street.
Okay.
And a lot of those lots, I don't know if they're, they're pretty wet too, so... The question, maybe the question would be is, one of these lots may give one of the lots on Maple Street, which may not be developed, frontage on Oakdale Road, allow them to develop it too, so, no. I think we should have the planning department just look at it and have the building inspector take a look at these parcels and tell us what the possibilities might be for any and all of the abutters so that we can make a more informed decision as to whether or not we want to offer them up for sale.
Makes sense to me. Board members?
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, so I think the building inspector should meet with the planner and take a look and see what the possibilities are.
Greg, you have that?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Bell.
All right. Thank you very much. All the new business. Mr. Masari?
I attended the, I mean, a conference on Friday with Greg, Elizabeth was there too, and I caught, I got in there a little late, I caught the end of the governor's address, I think Greg, he, the whole thing. But I did attend two sessions. One was with the new Secretary of Administration and Finance, was on the job for seven days, Glenn Shaw, and he broke down the governor's budget, and this, after listening to it, sort of puts even further uncertainty as to moving ahead with our budget process, because around this time of the year, we've taken the budget, the governor's budget presentation, and then built our revenue plan going forward for the next fiscal year off of it. All was good until I heard the last little piece of it, but basically, it appears in the budget, Chapter 70 is, Chapter 70 is being brought to foundation, I think we were already brought there. There's a comment in there about adding $25 per student, roughly $70,000 additional money, and there's some additional special education money, tied to, come up with the number. On unrestricted state aid, it's being held flat. Chapter 90 is going up, it's not clear as to how much more we might get in respect to that. The bombshell occurred at the end of the seminar, when he said, "Of the governor's proposals in his new revenue plan, the taxes, 30% of that revenue is applied to the operating budget." So in other words, it's not, if it was all being applied to infrastructure, as he's been talking about, although he has been talking about education too, then in fact, you know, that would be okay, say, okay, we could probably start to use these numbers and see how they sort out. But with that level of risk, 30% suggests that if that doesn't get through, our local aid may go down. At least, that's my view of it. So that was the takeaway from that discussion. Someone asked them specifically what would go as a result of that, politely done the question by saying, "I can't predict that at this point." The second conference I went to was titled, I forget the exact name, it was, it was interesting because it's appropriate to two things. One is potential additional financing of, potential additional override. And two, a lot of it fed into our capital planning. And in fact, there was an interesting couple of examples that I'll get out to the committee on that issue. The seminar was called "Your Community's Credit and Bond Rating," and there were two presenters. One was Sandy Poole from the town of Amherst, who used a lot of Amherst information. And the second was Cindy McErnie, who is a member of First Southwest, who we use for finance. But I won't go to, talk about the presentation here, but I think there's some nice examples of ways to plan capital from expenditure side, rather than just, you know, looking at the needs and all of that. This has got to do with looking at things and maybe some different ways and coming up with some methodology to deal with the capital plan. I thought this was very timely, I went to the presentation and I'll, I scan these documents and I'll forward them to the committee.
Thank you.
And I'll put them on, I'll actually, I think I'll put them, with your permission, Greg, put them on a folder in Dropbox with a title, so that they'll be available for everybody. Overall, it was, I think it was well-attended. We spoke to a number of different vendors. The most interesting conversation was the one with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We talked a little bit about, you know, how the community's seeing overruns, and the gentleman we talked, and we know there are communities with overruns because we talked to some people that are in those communities while we were there. No, no one's having any of those kinds of problems. I don't know whether this gentleman was, you know, low in the ranks of the MSBA and, you know, was just there mining the booth, or what, but...
Were you surprised to hear about our problem?
Yeah, really was.
Well, if he wasn't aware of our problem, how would he be aware of anybody else's?
We talked to...
I think it was mining.
He just manning the boom.
Yeah, that's why.
So it was a launch.
I think it was an intern.
I talked, we talked to a gentleman whose school project came in 8% under budget. That was the number, Greg?
He killed us. He could stop, he could kill us.
We got his 8%?
No, 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 well, there were a couple, and they, they went from start to construction bids, I guess, in seven or eight months. They built a canned school that had been built seven times.
Six million dollars.
Yeah, see, we couldn't, see, that's one thing that's out there in the community, that they think we could have taken one of these model schools, we could not do that, given the nature...
Not on that lot.
Not on that lot, given the nature of the project, it just, the model school was not an option for us, so, to put that to market price, wasn't, wasn't possible.
Just...
No, I know you are, but for the public, because it's out there that, why don't we do a model?
Not to kind of taint the issue, just saying that. The other projects, the people that we talked to were, you know, were having problems for one reason or another, some of which have been in the news related to lawsuits, other things, bids coming, starting to come in higher. But the guy in the school board assistance group said the only thing I heard of bids coming in higher, you know, he wasn't aware of estimates being wrong, but bids coming in higher were windows.
Mason, Mason Reed and windows.
Well, the one that's in the, in the, in the news, that's right here in Wilmington, they went out, they estimated a window job at 850 for a school, 850,000, the bids came in, it was 1.4 million. It's almost a 50% increase over the last season, so...
Anyway, it was worth the time, I didn't go back on Saturday, I had planned to, and then, I don't know, I had other things to do. And when I looked, I mean, in terms of seminars, it was mostly the MMA business meeting and some things in the afternoon. Greg, I don't know, do you have any?
Yeah, it was a very interesting session on Saturday afternoon, dealing with OPAP and employee health, retiree healthcare costs and pension costs. And there is a report that's been issued in terms of OPAP and funding for OPAP, and what we found was, most communities are making small progress in terms of addressing their liability, but there are communities that have liabilities 10 times the size of ours and then some. The town of Framingham has afforded a $50 million liability at this point for retiree health insurance. But clearly, there's going to be some type of legislation that's going to say how cities and towns address this. Communities are looking at it right now, I think the city of Salem, which is seen as being progressive with a mayor former government, they take 5% of their free cash and dedicate it toward that. There are other communities that take small amounts here and there, but there was no one that stood up and said that they were committing hundreds of thousands of dollars to solve this problem on an annual basis. I think what, what was kind of interesting in the whole discussion was how retiree, eligibility for retiree health insurance in the future. There are some changes that are coming on down the road for that. The current standard is 10 years of service and age 55, and you're entitled to lifetime health insurance. There are some changes that will be coming down the road on the statewide level, which will mandate that those thresholds be higher. And they'll be done in a way that doesn't catch or trap people who are well into the system within a few years of retirement. They keep talking about age 50 as being one of the standards that they're looking at. Clearly, there is movement afoot on the state level to do something, addressing OPAP and also addressing retiree health insurance costs for the future. It was a pretty interesting seminar. Michael Widmer, the mayor from Salem, and also the state senator from Belmont, and they had some great ideas that none of us had heard of.
Well, they were on a task force that the governor put together, asked them to take a look at the pension reform and health insurance issue, and come up with some recommendations. How much of that's going to be adopted remains to be seen. It's, it's pretty aggressive as to what the governor has outlined. It appears to me that they're going to be capturing too many people in the system right now, who are already, would have already been vested, and, so I don't know how, I don't know how far it's going to go.
I don't either, and one of the things that came up was, you know, I heard that certain groups will be accepted, I mean, you know, I heard, this rule applied to everyone from state employees, municipal employees, but there's some exception for a teacher. And obviously, the more exceptions that are made, the more wanted down it becomes, then there'll be other groups that will be getting obsections also, so...
And the other thing is, as far as, you know, how it would affect the town and our threading, right now, our split is, I'm going to put, less generous than the, than the state employee split.
That's right, it's 50%.
And, so I think the impact on, on us as a municipality isn't going to be as, regardless of what they do, as significant as it will be at the state, state level.
Right.
Because we've been pretty conservative in relation to the split on health insurance and the split with retirees, which is a 50-50 split. The state currently is at 80-20, or 75-25, depending upon when people came into state service. Nobody's a 50-50 split, even a lot of communities are not even a 50-50 split. So it's, we've been pretty conservative over the years in relation to our negotiations, and we haven't given in on that, even though there's been a lot of pressure on us over the years to do so. You know, so taxpayers here, actually, we're in as good a shape as anybody in relation to the liability. And as far as any impact of the change, the only, the thing that would change would probably be the number of years someone would have to work on to become eligible. And the split under the proposal is they have to be here 20 years, be 55, and then it would be a 50-50 split, you know, and then if they go to 30 years, if you're a state employee under the proposal, it would go to the 75-25 or 80-20, whatever it is. So someone would have to put in 30 years, be 60 years old, and then to get up to what the current benefit is. So we're already at the 50-50 split and have no, you know, my only fear is that it would mess around with what we already have here.
No doubt.
We have to be cognizant of what the proposals are so that the benefits in this community don't necessarily have to be significantly improved, so to speak, for the employee.
Sure, I'll take, I'll take the paperwork and put it up on the Dropbox. One of the other interesting seminars that I had an opportunity, I'll be, I'll be quick on it, was about code of conduct for employees and for citizens. it, was about code of conduct for employees and for citizens doing business with the town. The town of Acton has actually done a lot of work in terms of training their employees. Steve Ledoux, the town manager and his staff, made a, made a nice presentation at the meeting about code of conduct, and one of the things that they emphasized was employee training and just dealing with the public. Interesting enough, we do have a session scheduled tomorrow morning to deal with employee training. Called Difficult People, but I like to say there's more than that, what we call it, is I Pay Your Salary, the type of commentary where someone comes in and they're very aggressive. We, we just recently formed a safety group, I formed a safety group in Town Hall, to be able to address not only the, the safety and security measures that we've all heard about, like door locking systems and safety glass and security camera, we can talk about those things all day, what we really need is the proper policies and procedures behind that. And that's the thing that we need to work on next, and then talking about how we train our employees. How do we train our employees to deal with these type of difficult situations that come up? And Acton has a good model, I was impressed in hearing what they had to say. And we're beginning tomorrow some training programs, and again, we will be pulling together policies and procedures addressing codes of conduct. I would like to get the board involved, because the board does need to be involved in anything that might affect the public. I don't want to do that in isolation from the board, it does need to involve. It's a good session.
And one last comment, another little takeaway from the community credit and bond rating. One of the presenters, I believe, was Sandy Poole, had, I don't know whether she worked in Newton or if she had some information about Newton, but she said when they did their high school, they didn't do it with an override, but they had built a large fund up, similar to our debt stabilization fund, to keep the debt payment flat to cover the cost of the school. Then she turned around and said, "But if they need to do another capital expenditure, they definitely will need an override."
They have problems, but, that's how I feel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prisco?
You know, just, I, I do hope the community comes out tomorrow night and the other two sessions following on the school informational hearing, so I think it's important, and I look forward to it. Greg, kind of continuing from, a little bit from this discussion that we just had, you had gone away on a trip some time ago, and you said you were going to give a presentation and what you learned and stuff, and are we still going to get that presentation?
Yeah, I had actually meant to put something together this past fall, and I'd be happy to, to give that presentation to the board at, at an upcoming meeting, if we can schedule it.
Sorry? Is it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olair.
I too would ask people to, and I assume these informational hearings are going to be taped, so that if they don't make it...
I'm not certain about tomorrow night's session.
I would urge, strongly urge, to get NOR CAM to, to cover these informational hearings, because it's a big decision the public has to make and participate in, and the more information, as we've found in the past, the more information that gets out there, the better educated the public, and the more likely they are to make an informed decision. So, I don't know, Greg, if you can contact NOR CAM in relation to tomorrow night's meeting to make sure that they cover it for us, and give them the dates for the other informational hearings, so they can put it on their schedule. But I would urge everybody to, again, pay close, pay, pay close attention to, to what's going on, other than, you know, the outrage and the concern in relation to, you know, what you're hearing. Let's, let's get the facts and then make an informed decision, so please, pay attention. Yeah, the only thing I want to mention is, over the weekend, I went to a fundraiser at Mystic Valley, Mystic Valley Elder Services for the Meals on Wheels program, which was very successful, it was a comedy night, and as you're all well aware, Mystic Valley provides a tremendous amount of services to this community for nothing, next to nothing, and it's these types of fundraiser efforts that help provide resources. This one specifically was targeted towards the Meals on Wheels, and again, we have several representatives here in the community that are on the board, you know, Mary Preney, Michelle Maughn, and Joe Vino, who are very active participants on the board at Mystic Valley, and it'll be congratulated on a successful event. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to give an update on the capital improvement planning committee. We had our, another new follow-up meeting last Wednesday, where we actually went out and did site visits on some of the requests, spent a couple hours visiting the police station, library, senior center, and D W, and I got to say, it went very, very well. And this week, Wednesday's meeting will include bringing in department heads to, to talk about their, their requests, so I think it's going pretty well, and I, I've got to say, the process is, is more along, I'm impressed by it. Again, I want to stress the importance of tomorrow night's meeting and the two additional meetings on February 28th and March 14th. There's a lot of misconceptions out there, I just want to make sure, people are going to vote the way they want, but I want to make sure they have all the information, and they vote, you know, they vote with, with the information that they have, so I can't stress the importance of those, of those three meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing, just a question in relation to where are we on the Economic Development Committee? It seems to have, how many more membership, and how many more members do we need?
It stalled as a result of not having a planner for many, many months. I was going to let her get her feet wet, approach her, and restart the fire in the Economic Development Committee.
Yes, Mr. Vali?
Mr. Misery met a, and I met a resident who was quite interested in serving on the committee at the conference, so I think he would be a good addition.
Very good.
But, thank you.
Actually, on the website, the form is there to volunteer, it's right on the town website to join Economic Development Committee, so if you have their information, you can maybe let them know. They can download, it's all right there.
My comments are just limited to what other members have talked about. Tomorrow evening's informational session at 7 o'clock, High School Auditorium. Secondary School Building Committee recognizes that there's a lot of emotions surrounding this issue, sort of a perfect storm for us. As I said earlier this evening, none of us wanted to be in this position. Tax bills are out and due Friday, so the timing could not be worse. However, I encourage every member of the community to come out, keep an open mind, listen to the presentation, ask the questions that you have, and receive the factual answers to any question that you have. Just remind everyone that we, there is a need that was identified, the community overwhelmingly supported it, and I leave it up to you to make the ultimate decision, a special town meeting, a special election, however, I think you will see there's an explanation for what happened and what we need, but I encourage each and every one of you to come out, listen, and ask. Thank you.
And with that, there's no need for any questions?
No. I'm sorry?
I would request one for the purposes of having a discussion regarding the financial interests of the community.
Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of, what's your purpose? Sorry, I didn't hear you.
To discuss items that have implications of financial interest of the community.
If that's a purpose, I don't know if it fits.
But I have one too.
No.
You would actually...
Help me with this, Greg.
Well...
I will.
I have one, Sean, that you had actually asked us to give some feedback in regards to an upcoming CVA discussion. I thought we were going to enter into executive session to have that discussion.
Litigation?
Litigation strategy.
Litigation strategy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of litigation strategy, such as, just such discussions in open session will have a detrimental impact on the town, and further the board of selectmen will return to open session for adjournment.
I think there's an issue with Selectman Prisco electing a discuss that involves collective bargaining strategies, what? Correct? Correct. So I think you can read the, read the motion as previously written.
I'm going to do it again. Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining and litigation strategy, such discussions in open session will have a detrimental impact on the town, and further the board of selectmen will return to open session for adjournment.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any discussion, hearing not. Mr. Olair?
Aye.
Mr. Foody?
Aye.
Mr. Misery?
Aye.
Mr. Prisco?
Aye.
The chair votes aye.